First, the role order of business is our call, roll call. Michelle, if you want to please do that.
Alderman. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Mr. Baney. Mr. Boaz.
Present.
Mr. Bradley.
Present.
Mr. Garminia.
Present.
Mr. Milber.
Present.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams.
Present.
Present. Thank you. Thank you for that. Before we begin any business, the first thing I would like to do is acknowledge and welcome Commissioner Aaron Williams, who's online, but we anticipate him walking in the door before long. Welcome, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, and apologies for running late in person, but I'm excited to be here.
Well, we'll give you an opportunity at the end of the meeting to give us more than that. Also, standing at the dais with us is Casey Milber. She is standing in as the replacement for Grace Keung from the mayor's office. She does have voting rights on all but the minutes of yesterday. Welcome, Commissioner Milber.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, the first order of business is our approval of minutes. Commissioners should have received those, and I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as disseminated.
Move to approve, Commissioner Bradley.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bradley, second by Commissioner Boaz. Call for vote.
Alderman. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Garminia.
Aye.
Mr. Milber.
Abstain.
Mr. Williams.
I abstain as well.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Motion passes with five votes.
Thank you very much for that, commissioners. We can move on with the next order of business. You have had an agenda. Again, I will mention there will be a public hearing tonight. So I invite you, if you're present, please register with Michelle on my left and your right. If you're online, please be sure to indicate in the chat. We'll acknowledge you at the appropriate time. We ask all that are speaking to be respectful of those. So we typically hold you to about two minutes. So if that time comes and we do ask you for two minutes, I always like to stand up and stretch my legs, never to tap somebody on his shoulder. So hopefully, I don't get to stand up much today. With that, the first order of business will be a presentation by the staff. And Miriam will give that. That will be on a Veterans Administration Hospital Expansion Project, and we'll go forward from there. Yeah. Oh, Scott, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Chairman, one of our staff members is visiting and investigating on a planning-related trip to the city of Buffalo, Scott Ogilvy. He will be helping with this first item. As all of you that are here tonight, thank you for coming. We are doing this as a hybrid meeting in that COVID has its appearances again. So some of us are joining on the Internet. I can see that there are chairs pretty distance apart. If you're not with somebody that you're familiar with, please separate your distance, and there's also masks available out in the lobby.
Thank you. With that, Scott, you're online, I believe, so we'll hand it over to you.
Great. Well, good evening, Chairman Strather and members of the Planning Commission. Would like to have joined you in person today, but as Mr. Rose said, I am on assignment in Buffalo, so joining you remotely. There we go, switching back over to the presentation. I can do the presentation in this view, so.
You can do full screen mode.
If we just advance the slides a few? Great. Up one, if we could. Back one. Okay, so this is an informational presentation, but it is an informational presentation about an item that is on the agenda as a delegated street vacation at the end of the agenda. Now, as you know, we don't always do presentations on delegated items, but this item is a significant project, and we thought that the application for the street vacations was a good time to provide an update to the Planning Commission on both the street vacations, but more broadly on the project itself, the John Cochrane Veterans Administration Hospital Campus Expansion Project. I believe that in the room are two representatives affiliated with the VA, Genevieve Walters, who's a project manager with the VA, and Mary Ann Maranucci, who handles real estate, property-related things with the Construction and Facilities Division of the VA. And then I also believe that online are two other representatives. There is John Schreiner. He's a project manager with the Army Corps of Engineers, who is working closely on this project, and Shonda Joshi, who is a project manager within the Department of Veterans Affairs, who is directly managing it on the VA's behalf. Can we confirm that they are all here before we move on?
I did see the hand of Genevieve. I did see her raise her hand. John Schreiner, you said it was online. Miriam? Mary Ann is also in the room? You want to go ahead and acknowledge those?
Yes, Scott. So Chad Marcus is here from the facility, and Mary Ann is here in the room. So yeah, I was just correcting you there.
All right, great. Well, we've got a big team. Thank you. We can go to the next slide. So we will return to this slide when the VA project team discusses the project. But in general, this is a project that includes several vacations of right-of-way around the current VA campus, which is on North Grand in the Covenant Blue Grand Center neighborhood. And the VA, for several years, has been working towards a campus expansion and modernization program that contains a wide variety of activities. So the...I'll summarize a few of them, and I'll note that they've begun preliminary construction on this expansion. It will ultimately include the construction of several new hospital-related buildings, a new primary hospital, support buildings and facilities, campus infrastructure, and importantly, while allowing the current VA hospital to be operational throughout construction. Early phases will include the new primary hospital tower to the immediate west of the current primary facility, new utility plant, new parking structures, new arrival and visitor circulation, and improvements to the perimeter of the site within the right-of-way. And the purpose of, you know, the general purpose of the proposed expansion is really just to modernize this facility, which serves many veterans throughout the year, but the facility itself is aging and no longer meets the VA's current standards for a number of criteria. We can go to the next slide. So the item itself is summarized in this slide. So the yellow areas show the proposed right-of-way vacations. So starting with the, on the south end, there's Enright Avenue between Spring and Grand Avenue. Then there's Bell Avenue between Spring and Grand. There is a portion of Windsor Place from Spring up to an existing alley drive. There's St. Alphonsus Street, which you may not know as a street if you pass through, but is a public right-of-way. And then there's a little alley, unnamed alley, at the northwest corner of the site. And in this slide, I will note that the building that houses Justine Peterson, just to be clear, is not included in the campus site expansion, and access to that building and adjoining buildings is preserved. Go to the next slide. Here is an aerial. The pink, transparent pink section is areas that are basically currently occupied by the VA campus that are in use, either in the direct campus facility or across the street for parking. Some of the preliminary construction I noted earlier that is really already underway and completed is the parking garage that's been added in the northwest corner. And then the blue outline shows when the project is complete, what the future campus footprint will look like. Next slide. Here is another aerial image with the future site plan overlaid, showing some of the interior circulation, some of the new buildings, new parking structures, and giving, I would say, a conceptual idea of what a complete campus will look like in the future. Next slide. Other way, I think. Here's a summary of the right-of-way that are being vacated, same as we saw in previous slide with the yellow images. Next slide. And then one really important related element that we wanted to call out is this project's relationship to the ongoing Brickline Greenway and future Hotomont Greenway construction. So as I'm sure many of you know, both Great Rivers Greenway and the city have been working very closely together over a number of years to advance both of these projects. We're very excited to say that the Brickline project depicted here, starting at North Grand from Natural Bridge and continuing south to Cass, and then moving one block over to Spring Avenue, as depicted in this slide. All of those segments are fully funded and are in various states of design. And we really want to emphasize that the expanded VA campus footprint is not in conflict with those projects. They can and will proceed as they were originally planned. And in fact, when the VA is reconstructing the perimeter of the site, we'll be able to rebuild both sides of Spring throughout that section. The Greenway will likely end up on the west side of Spring. Next slide.
So Scott, I think this would be a good time to go back to the slide where you show the future VA concept. And I'll invite whoever would like to come up from the VA to just give us a little bit of the overall big picture and background and your processes.
Absolutely. So my name's Chad Marcus. I'm with the local facility here in St. Louis. And just want to tell you a little bit about why and when we're anticipating this project to take place. So as everybody knows, the VA hospital down there has been there for quite some time. It was built in the early 1950s. And since then, the patient demand has increased substantially, and we're really running out of space, to be honest with you. So this project is ultimately, the goal is to right-size the campus for our functions that are there today. So as Scott mentioned earlier, a little bit on the background slide, we're addressing some facility conditions, is what we call them, one of which is patient privacy. So right now, we have double and triple occupancy rooms, maybe more if it calls for it. So the new facility will have single rooms for our veterans. Physical security and mission-critical mandates. So one of the big things there is we will become, basically, we will have the ability to become an island by ourselves in the event of some sort of national disaster, say, an earthquake or something of that nature. So what that means is we can withstand or remain operational for up to 96 hours without any assistance from outside the community, if you want to call it. And that allows us to provide humanitarian aid if we need to, to the local area. Seismic compliance is a big one. So what we are doing is we're pulling all of our mission-critical functions that are currently in our Building One facility that's there today. Mission critical being surgery and ICUs and things of that nature. We are pulling those into that new facility so we can ensure they remain operational at all times. And as we have issues all around the city with parking, we are going to address our parking concerns at the campus as well, that you'll see on the map there with the new parking garages. So some of the components that you see on the map up there right now, you see the inpatient tower right in the middle. You see a central utility plant that'll basically be our heart of the facility, and then other supporting utility infrastructure that'll be around the site. So as far as schedule-wise, we have, for many, many years, we have been in the planning stages for this project, and we are currently in the midst of design. We're right in the middle of that effort. And so our design efforts are anticipated to progress until 2026, where we will start our big construction efforts. But leading up to that point is where we'll do our site preparation, our utility relocations, utility installs, requests and street vacation, those things. So some of our smaller, what we call our smaller activities, to get the site ready. That's all I have really to present. If there's any questions?
Thank you. At that point, I will do this. Let's do it this way. The commissioners, I typically go through the roll, align them to question if there are any. So we'll stick with that. Alderman Kohn, are you online?
I'm here. I don't have any questions, President, currently.
Thank you, sir. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Boaz, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley?
No questions.
Commissioner Garminia?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Milber?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the chair will simply recognize anytime we're serving those that have served us, I think we're always happy to see that happen, and this campus probably isn't big enough for that. So especially on two days after 9/11, we definitely recognize the need for that service. So with that, this was an informational session, so there's no action item on it. At that point, is there any other notes to be made?
No more speakers, but Chad, I know as a federal government, you go through a couple budget years to get this to fruition. You want to give any hint as to what has been spent and allocated so far and some aspect of what the overall scale is of the project financially?
We have had several appropriations that went into the project already that we're using for our design effort, property acquisition, and some demolition activities. As far as rough scale of the project, I think what was said earlier is it's very, very comparable to the NGA project that just happened here locally. And there is currently a request in the presidential budget to fund the project, so it's...
Well said. Well said. Okay, thank you.
And as you said, you're in planning now, and you've received the construction to start '26, your site work in '25?
So we'll probably, we'll do some site prep activities in '24, as early as '24, going through '25. And then what we call the big construction efforts will start in '26.
And what kind of timing period is that? Is there an anticipated time?
We're anticipating it'll go through 2030.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right. With that, let me remind those present again, there will be a public hearing this evening. If you're here for that, if you're here present, please be sure to see Michelle to my left and your right to register for that. If you're online, please be sure to add your name to the chat. Jonathan, at that point, will guide us through that conversation. The first action item is 6111 Berthold, which Miriam is going to present at this point. And before she does, let me remind everybody, the commission adopts zoning ordinances and makes decisions on all rezoning petitions, thereby guiding the development and redevelopment of the city. It also reviews the blighting study and redevelopment plans before providing recommendations to the Board of Aldermen, saying that means that anything that we do still goes to the Board of Aldermen from this point. So just wanted that to be known and noted. So with that, Miriam, go forward.
Well, great. Thank you, and good evening, Chair and members of the commission. So this is a continuation of an item that we first heard and I presented on at last month's meeting. At that meeting, there was a public hearing that was open and closed. I'll provide a review of what we heard during that meeting, because some commissioners here tonight weren't at that meeting. But as a review, this is regarding a parcel in the Clayton-Tam neighborhood on Berthold Avenue that is part of the former Talania's Restaurant parking lot. And so the petitioner requests, this is a petitioner initiated a rezoning request. The petitioner request is to rezone this parcel from A, Single Family Dwelling District, to F, Neighborhood Commercial District. Next slide, please. So here's just a little view of the property. So you can see the subject property outlined in pink on the slide is actually a portion of the parking lot that had been serving Talania's Restaurant for years. And so the petitioner seeks to consolidate the subject parcel, this pink outlined parcel, with the adjacent parcel to create one larger commercial parcel that would be outlined in blue, after which they would demolish the vacant structure of the former Talania's Restaurant and construct a comprehensive marijuana dispensary facility. Next slide, please. So you can see a little bit of the neighborhood context here. This is just south of Highway 6440, right along Hampton Avenue, which is a fairly high-traffic corridor in our community, and sort of at a transition between that high-volume commercial corridor and the residential neighborhood immediate to the west. Next slide, please. And so, you know, this is kind of a surprising case. When we saw this on the zoning map, this has been operating as a parking lot for at least 30 years, as far back as we could tell. But it is zoned "single family," and it's immediately adjacent to this F Neighborhood Commercial District. And so the request to rezone from A to F would mean that the land uses allowed on this parcel would shift to those allowed in F. So you can see a list of those here, and then little asterisks next to uses that would be allowed only as conditional uses. One of those uses is the comprehensive marijuana dispensary facility, and that's what the petitioner does intend to construct. But I just want to pause and make a point here that really, any future commercial use of these lots as a consolidated parcel would require a rezoning. And so it is kind of an odd case that it is currently zoned "A, Single Family." Next slide, please. As we always do, we kind of evaluate the rezoning request or proposed rezoning against our strategic land use plan, the land use component of our city's comprehensive plan. And you can see this site is designated kind of both Neighborhood Commercial Area, which, as you can see, is, you know, sort of this commercial use designation in our strategic land use plan. It is both Neighborhood Commercial Area and then also in that yellow, Neighborhood Preservation Area, which also allows for existing housing and corner commercial, like in this case. And so we are finding this request to be in compliance with the strategic land use plan. And I will note in that Neighborhood Preservation Area designation a note about corner commercial development physically integrated with the surrounding neighborhood. And so that is the guidance we've been using for some of the specific, kind of site-specific recommendations that you'll hear in a moment. Next slide. So I did mention that the petitioner's desire for future use, excuse me, future use of a marijuana dispensary is a conditional use. And so what that means is it's not allowed by right, but it must be made compatible with that site by meeting certain conditions. Those conditions, in this case, kind of relate to operations and layout of the site and things like that. And in our code, the Planning Commission and the Planning and Urban Design Agency actually have this authority to submit findings of fact and recommendations for conditional use permit requests upon the application for a conditional use permit. And so we are kind of contemplating taking that option up, in this case, later in the process. But we're kind of providing a preview of what the staff recommendations would be at that time. Next slide. There are existing site requirements, just baseline, in our zoning code related to marijuana facilities and marijuana dispensaries. So you can see those relate to security and monitoring, no marijuana use on site, exterior lighting, and then for dispensaries specifically, no consumption of cars and also limited hours of operation. So if this project were to move forward to request a conditional use permit, all of those would be baseline requirements at that time. Next slide. And in addition to other requirements in the zoning code related to site plan, setbacks and heights and things like that, we did, you know, really based on commissioner feedback at our last meeting, work as a staff to make these, sort of, these staff recommendations a little bit more specific before the commission chose to act on this item. We did have time within that 60-day review period for this rezoning by petition. And so what you see on the screen here are narratively those much more specific kind of site plan recommendations that, at the time, a conditional use permit application is submitted or a variance request is submitted, we will submit these recommendations as a staff in the future. But that is kind of, this is sort of a preview of some of those recommendations. And I'll say that working with the petitioner, they've been really very open to these points of feedback and have worked really in very good faith with us to develop a site plan and kind of do some advanced work with us to show how they can accommodate these more specific recommendations. So, you know, this quickly, and you'll see these visualized a little bit more, actually, in the petitioner's updated site plan. But some of the topics relate to building placement at the corner of Berthold and Hampton Avenues, vehicular access management, so limiting curb cuts and trying to manage access to minimize conflict between pedestrians and cars, and also between cars and cars at sort of this high-traffic, complicated intersection. A setback along Hampton Avenue to widen what is currently a very narrow sidewalk. So using the private property here to expand that pedestrian zone. Enhance screening and landscaping at the the transition between the potential kind of future consolidated commercial property and the adjacent residential property. And then also, you know, even thinking about lighting impacts, making sure that the placement of lighting, would it be, have a negative impact on the neighboring residents. So these are narratively our specific site plan recommendations. And this really was a team effort between PDA staff and the zoning section of the building division to arrive at these as sort of add-ons to the baseline zoning requirements. Next slide. Quick tour of the site, a reminder for commissioners who were with us last time, and sort of some context for those who weren't. At the top is the subject site facing south, so you can see just this sliver of asphalt, you know, current parking lot. And, you know, again, really has been this parking lot for about 30 years. On the bottom here, a picture kind of of the subject site, but also how it relates to the former Talania's Restaurant. Next slide. A view south down Hampton. You can see this is a very kind of auto-oriented in nature, and some of the site plan recommendations really do respond to that, trying to make this a safer pedestrian experience through building placement and otherwise. And then in the bottom picture, a view of the adjacent residential property. Next slide. And then you can see immediately to the north, Shell Station, and immediately to the east, on the other side of Hampton, a BP Gas Station and Salvation Army, just right across the street. Next slide. And like I mentioned, I did want to provide a summary of the public comment we heard during the public hearing and a written comment, because we have some commissioners with us that did not hear those comments at the last meeting. So... that did not hear those comments at the last meeting. So we heard and received in written comment concerns regarding, you know, the specific proposed use of a marijuana dispensary, also concerns about increased foot traffic, maybe the potential for crime, also kind of the opportunity cost for potential future uses associated with a potential future zoo expansion, a concern, so all about the number of dispensaries in or near the neighborhood, and then also sort of identifying that the dispensary company is not an in-state owned dispensary company. So, you know, I will say or add that a lot of this is about the specific proposed use. The rezoning really deals with the allowed uses of the land, not a specific project. Though, as you can see, we kind of are taking the opportunity to highlight some opportunities should this project kind of continue through the permitting and approvals process. Next slide. So, and with that, we have with us on the line Jamie Mansfield, representing the petitioner. And like I mentioned, she and her team really was very open, working with staff in responding to our comments. So I'll let her...
Miriam, the petitioner made a presentation last time?
Yes.
Will there be much different this time?
Yes, I believe she will just quickly summarize what was presented last time and then focus on the new material.
Right. And then you'll verify the new material so we can get to an action?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, thank you so much, Miriam and Scott and Mary with the city staff. They've been wonderful giving at least feedback from, you know, the site plan perspective. And so one piece of that feedback, too, was to ensure that we had at this meeting available for you all, you know, representatives from the group and I have the development group. And I wanted to make sure that I told you that they were on the call. My partner and colleague, Amy Ryan, is on the call from Armstrong Teasdale. Sam Allen is the Chief Experience Officer and is overseeing all of the real estate development. Paul Rockers is also available. He's the Director of Compliance. John Nodder and Rebecca Tason from L3, our real estate brokerage team. There's Allison Gouge from Stock and Associates. She's our civil engineer and has been working with us on all of the revised plans. And there's Bill Manoliadis. He is our architect, and he is also available on the call this evening. Next slide, if I could, please. Again, you can, you can move on from that one. And again, this one, too, is exactly what Miriam just summarized, that we're seeking to rezone. And I will say that it's been wonderful, again, working with staff to kind of come up and develop with a plan that we absolutely understood that we would be in front of the city again on with respect to our CUP and the use and this site specifically. But to echo again what Miriam said and what we truly anticipated in, in working from the very jump with this was to do some of what we are calling and understand from the city's perspective that the seller currently, you know, either hasn't done or needed to do was essentially rezone this parcel of land that's operating as a parking lot and then move to consolidate the lot. So that's exactly what we intend on doing, is taking care of those types of administrative proceedings before we get to the CUP. But it's been a wonderful experience, again, getting the feedback from everybody as we advance to the CUP process. And next slide as well, if I could. But next slide, please, sorry. Again, and you can move on from that. But here is, here's the location again, which Miriam did go over. And the next slide is actually what we were able to get with the feedback here from staff, which is moving the building as close as we can to the corner of Hampton and Berthold, which, which we have done here, and then also providing a 10-foot sidewalk along Hampton. And it will help with pedestrian traffic and all of those needs as well. I know that the last time I was in front of you guys as well, our site plan, even though we committed, but our site plan did show that there was a drive-through facility, there is not a drive-through of this facility, and this site plan is 100% in line with that plan. Next slide. We also were told that it would be helpful, and obviously we intend on making the site absolutely as beautiful as possible, but we needed to provide landscaping at this property and also show landscaping and screening along the property line between the site and the residential structure to the left. And so this is, you know, again, what we proposed, and I think if you move through it to the next slide, what you'll see is a color rendering of the landscaping that we proposed that meets code. If you could move to the next slide, please. Thank you so much. Yes, you can, you can see right there, and I know it's hard to see in the details, but we have provided it to staff exactly what we intend on having there. Again, I have Allison on the line that can answer any questions about landscaping at any time for anybody on this call, even if it's not during this particular procedure, but just want to talk through it. You can move to the next slide. And again, part of that landscaping project, presentation is to provide a plant schedule and show kind of some cross-section and patches, which we provided here in working with the city. Next slide, please. There's also a proposed lighting plan, because we understand that light pollution and being adjacent to neighborhood and residential also, too, is, is important to make sure that we're meeting the code and ensuring that there's no light pollution that's going to go and approach on anybody's property. So we have provided a plan, and we will absolutely work with city staff closely on reviewing that plan as we get closer to the CUP process, And here, too, what you can see is kind of an easier view to see the color block landscaping and lighting map, too, that Allison's team put together for us, which is, which is fantastic. That kind of shows where light poles are going to be located and where landscaping is going to be located as much as possible to meet parking regulations. And again, pushing the building as close as we can up to that corner. Now, here is a color rendering, and I know that, you know, we wanted to do this, too. And I know the last time we talked, we talked about, you know, it looked quite different. But we have also a different brand to us called Code, same operators, same depth and experience and bench that you have here. But we like the codes for this location and this type of branding. And what you're looking at right here is the building and the front entrance is actually facing the courtesy diner. So it's facing south. And if you go one more picture, this rendering, again, is not, you know, indicative of what is the final product by any means. We obviously need to work with staff. We obviously want feedback from, you know, the, during the CUP process and community outreach as well. But we really wanted to show what the building would look like, or a building would look like, as hugged up close to that corner as we possibly could, because the last rendering, obviously, without the feedback from the city wanting it up to that corner, was in a different position. Although there may be some minor discrepancies with, you know, where this location is or the sidewalk actually looking like a 10-foot sidewalk, this is indicative of what that building would look like, at least facing up towards closer to the corner. Again, I believe that's the end of my presentation. We do have the team available here to answer any questions. But we're very hopeful to, you know, get this parcel really pad-ready for any user, essentially. But we do hope to be the user at this site. And we know that there's more to this process. We understand that we will be communicating a lot through the process of the CUP. But it's our understanding that we needed to rezone this and do the lot consolidation so that we could really roll up our sleeves and get to work on showing you guys that we are going to be great neighbors. And we do hope to be a great neighbor in this community. So thank you very much, Miriam, again, for your feedback, and Mary for design feedback. And thank you again to the Commission for allowing us to come back again and make this presentation to you guys.
All right. Thank you very much. As Miriam mentioned, one is that we did have a public hearing a month ago. So we, these comments and their concerns were mentioned. Our, our job is really zoning of the parking lot, moving from A to S, A to S, C...
F.
Yeah, A to F. Can't read my own writing right now. A to F. And as we go through, I will go through simple, starting with the Commissioners and Alderman Cone. Any questions or concerns at this moment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to recognize that, you know, out of the concerns that Miriam listed in the presentation earlier, there were some that I don't know if they were missing or perhaps weren't listed, because, you know, these folks have incorporated those concerns into their, you know, updated planning process here. But some of the, you know, concerns in addition to what were listed also were, you know, sightline visibility, the light pollution, which, you know, I know Jamie in her presentation addressed, you know, and I have, among other items as well. But, you know, our last meeting, I've had a couple conversations with, you know, various representatives of the dispensary and of this, the site. And they have, you know, made some efforts to address those concerns as well as the ones that were identified, including the one with the zoo, and reaching out to them and making sure that, you know, there weren't any significant issues or concerns on their part. And my understanding is all of those conversations have now taken place since our last public hearing on the matter. So I do want to commend everyone for their efforts and, and bringing this forward and, and listening to the community and addressing some of the concerns that were brought up in our previous hearing. It means a lot to me that you guys went through that effort. And I know it's a short time period to do all that work. So just thank you for, for that effort.
Thank you, Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo Miriam's comments about the good-faith effort of this group and how I was able to follow up with them as well, like my colleagues did, with some of the immediate concerns we had since the last hearing. So thank you with that. I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Boas?
No questions.
Online, Commissioner Bradley?
No questions. Thank you.
Online, Commissioner Garmidia?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. President, Commissioner Milberg?
Yeah, just a quick question. My apologies if this was already addressed at the prior meeting. Just wanted to learn a little bit more about this company. Is it sort of a standalone company? Is it their only site? Do they have experience in other communities doing this kind of work across the state of Missouri? I know it was mentioned that they're an out-of-state company, so it sounds like there's experience certainly in another state. But just would value learning a little bit more about the experience they have with implementing designs and improvements like this.
Great. I'll let Jamie answer.
Sure, absolutely. And I believe if Sam Allen, our Chief Experience Officer, knows the company and knows it well, too. And I know for a fact that I've been involved in other projects around and working with lots of, you know, with municipalities that, you know, GDF Mako and Good Day are looking at, too, and their team that they have with L3 and using stock engineering. And they also have civil engineers and architects on board, too, that they take these things and these presentations and being part of the community in Missouri very, very seriously and working with them, too, because they want longevity and they want to stay and be a good neighbor. But I will let Sam respond to the, to Missouri in general, and they are, and in boots on the ground. I know their Director of Compliance here is a former DHSS officer and license officer. So they have somebody on staff here as far as operations that has been with the company for a long time, has come from the actual Missouri Regulatory Licensing Agency here that knows the rules inside and out and knows the players there that are at the licensing agency as well, and ensures that he is compliant and all of these facilities are compliant with every rule and regulation, too. So on the operational side of that, that's certainly who this company is and the type of people that they surround themselves with. And Sam, if you're unmuted and want to add anything, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, while, while you did a great job there, Jamie, while we are, our headquarters is based in Arkansas, we, the majority of our business is actually in Missouri. We have over 20 dispensaries in the state. And so we've been operating quite a while there. We have, we have a cultivation site as well. We employ over 700 people in Missouri. So we really are, to say that we're an Arkansas-based company is not quite accurate, since more of our employees are actually based in Missouri. So we've not done any ground-up builds on the, on the dispensary side in the state, but we have in other states. And so we have a very great construction, design, architecture, civil engineer team behind it. We did build our cultivation site from the ground up. So we have quite a bit of experience with construction design. And, you know, while we haven't done a ground-up on the dispensary side, we've done a lot of retrofits for those 20-plus dispensaries that we have in the state.
Thank you. Before you go any further, please identify your full name and who you're with, please, from the record.
Yes, so I'm Sam Allen with Good Day Farm.
Thank you, Sam.
And Miriam, as this is a continuation from the last meeting with a recap of the presentation, and you've heard some comments, let's make sure there's no other questions from the Commissioners. But then as you wrap up, if you just wrap up, that we have made an addition of what is part of the resolution for instructions to staff.
With that, were you, any other questions, Commissioner Milberg?
No, thank you. And thank you to those present from the company for providing this information.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. And the Chair simply wants to echo Alderman Cone's statement that you were very responsive to the public hearing and the statements and questions asked. So we're very appreciative of that. With that, would you please make your recommendation and your reading?
So like Don mentioned, the, the main changes in the resolution that was presented to the Planning Commission actually have been highlighted in the resolution. So you can see those more specific site plan recommendations. And that refers to the third item here, that PDA, PDA staff will submit a letter consistent with those recommendations. So we do find that the proposed rezoning, the rezoning request is in conformity with the strategic land use plan and recommend approval of the proposed rezoning.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion from the Commissioner.
This is Alderman Cone. I move that we adopt the recommendations from the planning staff.
Second, Commissioner Garmidia.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Cone, seconded by, I'm sorry, moved by Alderman Cone, seconded by Alderman, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. With that, call for vote.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Boas?
Aye.
Mr. Brett?
Aye.
Commissioner Garmidia?
Aye.
Commissioner Milberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Judge Stravinsky?
Aye.
Most of the guests without press are voting aye.
Thank you very much. And this will move forward to the Board of Alderman, as earlier stated. As we transition at this moment, I want to remind everybody there will be a public hearing. If you're present, please see Michelle to my left. And if you're online, please be sure to put your name in the chat. We will call at the appropriate time for that public hearing. With that, go right ahead. Andrea?
Good evening. My name is Andrea Godshock. I'm a planner, environmental planner with the city. And this evening, I am presenting a Chapter 99 Bliding Study and Redevelopment Plan for this, for a site on 400 South 14th Street. Okay, so this redevelopment plan is for four condominium units in the 13-story building in the downtown West neighborhood. And the plan does not provide use of eminent domain. SLDC staff recommends the project be supported by up to 10 years, tax abatement based on 75% of the assessed value of incremental improvements. The next slide. Here we are on the site. The prospective redeVELOPER Edison STL Downtown LLC plans to renovate the units, which consist of the hotel portion of the building to reactivate retail and, to, sorry, to additionally reactivate retail and restaurant bays at the street level for the approximate cost of $24.9 million using private financing. The building is located directly across from the Civic Center Metro Station off of Exit 39A for 14th Street. The building's also listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Next slide. The building is located in a specialty mixed-use area and is also in the Design Downtown STL Plan area. PDA staff has reviewed the bliding study and redevelopment plan with the city's strategic land use plan and with the Design Downtown STL Plan. And the proposed redevelopment is consistent with the intent of the specialty mixed-use area, specifically developing and preserving a unique mix of uses, including mid-to-high-density residential development combined with commercial. And the area is also in the Design Downtown STL Plan, as I mentioned. And the proposed project complies with a designated target area for reuse of mixed-use development. So the redevelopment plan... So the redevelopment plan is found to be in compliance with the specialty mixed-use area of the Strategic Land Use Plan and also the Design Downtown STL Plan. Okay, next. Okay, so I'm going to run quickly through a tour of the site. Here we have an aerial, next. This is looking south on 14th Street and also north on 14th Street. Next. Another view in front of the building and of the metro station across the street. Next. This is under the overhang of the building. And Enterprise Center within walking distance. Next. And just another view of the site. Yep. Okay, next. Okay, so questions and discussion. I think we also have online Zach Wilson from SLDC and a representative of the consultants for the developers, redevelopmenters.
Thank you very much. I first recognize Zach. And if you want to introduce the developer, since you're online, Zach, I'll let you manage that.
Hi, Zach Wilson with SLDC, representing LRA also. The Shayla, are you on from Steadfast, who's representing the developer?
Hi, yes, I'm on.
Speak first, Shayla.
Yes, Shayla Mehan here with Steadfast City, representing the project.
Okay, then Zach, it's, she doesn't seem to make any comments right now. She'll be available to answer questions for the commission. Zach, do you want to say anything before I go to the commissioners?
No, we just, this is just for the commercial space of this building. Seventy-one units of the residential units in this building are not blighted. They're in actually very good condition. Only condition that we found economic blight and deterioration of the facilities is the commercials pieces of this building. So this is the only thing being debated and would receive tax abatement if they follow all the rules and guidelines.
Okay, thank you very much. Beginning with our questions online, Alderman Cone, any questions? I'll come back to Alderman Cone.
Sorry, no questions, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Boas?
No questions.
Online Commissioner Bradley?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Garmidia, any questions?
Yes, I had a question for the planning department. Just have we, and as a newer member of the planning commission, have we ever, is it, have we, do we regularly approve just incremental improvement tax abatements?
Not quite gathering what your question is, but it's regarding the financial package that goes with this?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we're finding it to be in compliance with the planning documents for what would be allowed at this site.
For the blighting study.
And the blighting study. And as we made sure it was mentioned that the only items that are blighted are the commercial areas, not the residential units. And the commercial areas are their own large condominiums. So it's that $24,000 investment in that, removing that blight that gets the incentives guided by SLDC's, LRA's scorecard for the amount of incentives that they get. That's not really in our purview.
Okay, so our purview is just to approve that it's in line with the plan, the strategic land use plan?
And that it's blighted.
And that it's, that part is blighted.
And the neighborhood plan, when they fall into a neighborhood plan area.
I'm sorry, speak.
When, and also neighborhood plan, when they are in a neighborhood plan area, which this one is.
All right. Any other questions, Commissioner Garmidia?
Yeah, so for, just so for my education, for a commercial portion of a building to be blighted, what's the definite, what's like the standard it has to meet?
So Zach, you're the one that LRA commissioned or performed the blighting study. Would you talk about what you found?
You muted, Zach.
Thank you. The conditions around the exterior of the building are not up to the standards of why we consider a hotel in downtown on all four sides. Exterior, the storefronts have been vacant for many, many years. That's because the ownership has changed and that's not put a real priority on those storefronts. That's an economic hardship to the city. You can go to any of the hotel reviews of OIA, which is, I believe, On Your Own. That's what it stands for. The conditions of the interior of the rooms, I have not stated there, are not up to par, I would say, also. So those are just at the beginning of what we think is, shows this property is blighted, so.
And the blighting, okay, so that's, that's, that, thank you. That answers my questions. That's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Milberg?
No questions.
Commissioner Williams?
No questions.
Thank you. The chair has no questions. At this point, I'd ask the staff to review their recommendation, please.
Okay. Again, after review, PDA staff finds the proposed redevelopment plan to be in conformity with the strategic land use plan for the specialty mixed-use area and the Design Downtown STL Plan. And staff recommends approval of the proposed redevelopment plan.
Thank you very much. With that, call for vote, call, I'll call for action, I'm sorry.
Move to approve?
Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Boas, seconded by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Call for vote. I heard a call for previous roll, any objections? Hearing no objections, approved with previous roll. Thank you very much. With that, thank you very much, Andrea, with that. The next item is going to be presented by Miriam. It is the zoning text change. This is, we have a public hearing. I'll call for that at the appropriate moment. If you're here for that, please sign up to my left or online. And at this point, Miriam, we'll turn it over to you.
Getting the rest of my materials there. Well, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a zoning text amendment or zoning text change, which these are actually initiated by the planning commission before they can be introduced in board bill form at the Board of Aldermen. And so what we have tonight is an overview of what's the proposed change before you all and also the policy context of kind of the what and why of this item. So the overview of what's before you tonight is, is here. So there has been, for some time, just want to enter, recognize a sort of interdepartmental working group, including members of the mayor's office, member of the president's, president of the Board of Aldermen's office, the zoning section, and the Department of Human Services team. We have Adam Pearson with us, the director of the Department of Human Services tonight, working on this issue of how can we equitably expand access to needed housing options and shelter beds in the city? And so one piece of that is subject to planning commission review. It relates to the zoning code. And it has kind of added up to a proposed new chapter of the zoning code related to special residential uses. And what does this new chapter do? It does three basic things. So it clearly defines special residential uses. It establishes clear site requirements for those uses, all of those uses, and also some additional site requirements for shelters specifically. And it also specifies districts where they can be permitted either by right or conditional. By and large, you'll see there are proposed to be conditional uses in most districts. Next slide, please. And the, the policy context here is a little complicated because there are a few moving parts, some related to the zoning code, some not. But both are part of the challenge here. So what's before the planning commission tonight is a zoning text amendment, which proposes changes to Title 26, which is our city zoning code. That's just where in the code our zoning regulations lie. That is to be reviewed and, in this case, initiated by the planning commission. In the resolution, you may see there are also references to the plat and petition process and some of the thoughts about that. But that is actually not what's before the planning commission tonight. That is found in Title 25 of our code, which deals with buildings and construction. So not a zoning item, but we did, for kind of the interest of transparency and context around this complex policy issue, kind of share the context of that. But that's actually not part of the planning commission's review tonight. So this is a little, a little tricky, but I'll explain a little bit more kind of what this means as we move forward. Next slide. So first, answering the question, what are special residential uses? What are we talking about with these specific types of housing options? So it's a range of unique options for community members who, in various different ways, are just not adequately served by other housing in the community. So you can see the seven uses that are proposed to be defined in this new chapter of the zoning code. Those include boarding houses, dormitories, group homes, halfway houses, rooming houses, shelters, and you'll see some specific definitions there, and also transitional housing. So of course, many of these combine housing with various kinds of social services and other support to help community members needing access to the shelter and other types of housing, the support they need to access employment, find other, more permanent or stable housing, healthcare, the other way. So these play a really important role in our community for those who are experiencing homelessness or otherwise kind of housing insecure or cannot find appropriate housing options otherwise. Next slide. I also wanted to share some of what we know about kind of why these uses are important. Housing insecurity and homelessness is kind of notoriously difficult to quantify in any geography. But I wanted to share some of what we do know from our research preparing for the proposed zoning text amendment. So the point in time count from 2023, which is really just, you know, one night in January, volunteers go out into the community to try to just help us all get a sense of how many people in a geography are experiencing homelessness. So this year, it was at least 1,250, just on that single night in January. We also know that last year, there were over 2,700 individuals that used the shelter system. You know, lots of different types of people, right? Some individuals, some families, some households with children, some couples. It's, you know, many different types of people in our community. We also know that estimated 20% of St. Louis public school families are considered homeless or housing insecure. So, you know, again, housing insecurity, definitely a present issue in our community, impacting many different types of people. Providing these special residential housing options is just kind of one piece of the puzzle, yet an important one. Because access to housing and access to emergency shelter can provide just really necessary relief from extreme weather. So both cold in the winter, of course, but also extreme heat, which we're seeing more and more of in St. Louis. Sometimes escape or refuge from domestic violence situations. And then, like I mentioned before, connections to other services and supports that they need to live a healthy, secure life. Next slide, please. And right now, our kind of policy context is that there are significant regulatory barriers to providing these types of housing. And there are two pieces of this. And just want to remind that the first piece, which I'm going to describe, is actually not a zoning item. So that's not kind of what's proposed to be changed and recommended by the planning commission, though that is part of the broader conversation, just not part of the planning commission's zoning duties and jurisdiction. So the first regulatory barrier is the plat and petition process, where to open a special residential use, you have to submit a drawing of the proposed building and its relationship to the surrounding properties and then actually collect signatures from people who either own property or who are registered voters within 500 feet of a given location. And what we know from a review of kind of the past 15 years of data of people who have entered into this process is that only 13% of all people trying to open any number of special residential uses have made it through the process. But people trying to open shelters, 0% have made it through this process. So the shelters that we have in our community, many of them are sort of grandfathered in from kind of times before some of these barriers were in place. So that is the plat and petition process. And again, kind of not subject to planning commission review, but part of the context here. So the, the next part of the process that somebody would have to enter relates to zoning approvals. So this assumes you've successfully collected all of those signatures and then you apply for an occupancy permit. Most special residential uses are conditional uses in some districts. But in our code, right now, the definitions are really unclear. There are no clear requirements. And so it's, it's just kind of an opaque and unpredictable process. But shelters in our code, homeless shelters, are not currently allowed in any zoning district in the city. So that, that means, you know, there's no place in the city where somebody could open a shelter either by right or even as a conditional use. Your occupancy permit application would immediately be rejected and you'd have to apply for a variance from zoning requirements. And that's heard by the Board of Adjustment, which would either approve or deny that request. But kind of a very difficult and unpredictable process. And like I mentioned, you know, there are very few people that even make it past that plat and petition requirement. Next slide. So that's our local context. But as we were beginning work on this question, we asked kind of, well, what do other cities do? How do other cities address specifically shelters in our zoning code? Because that's where we knew we needed to make a change because currently they're not allowed in any district. So we selected six cities to review with a focus on the shelter regulations, like I say. And these were the six, so Cincinnati, Portland, Baltimore, Buffalo, Detroit, and Rolla. And obviously, these are different kinds of cities. Some really have a lot of demographic or economic similarities to St. Louis. Some obviously are also located in Missouri, so valuable to know, same state law, that type of thing. But others just really recently updated the regulations. And so we thought, well, you know, if they really recently kind of took a look at this, it's valuable to look at that, too. So for example, Buffalo, actually Rolla, Portland, have all taken a recent look at this. So really valuable to look at these six. Next slide. Couple of key findings from this research, and I'll expand on this in a moment. But, you know, the first thing is that shelters are allowed in at least one district and often in several districts in other cities. Many cities have policies actually to encourage smaller shelters. And what that typically looks like is actually permitting smaller shelters by right in certain districts. So kind of making it a somewhat easier pathway. We didn't see anything like the plat and petition process that we have in St. Louis and other cities. We think we're a bit of an outlier there. Other cities' zoning codes had really clear definitions for shelters and other special residential uses, which we think just is, is helpful in helping the whole community just have clarity, transparency about what different uses fall under, what definitions and what the requirements are. That leads me to the fifth point about kind of clear site requirements, whether shelters are allowed as conditional uses or permitted. They're all, in other cities' code, we saw kind of clear site requirements communicated upfront that set a high standard for things like operation, security, and so on. But I think one key finding is that St. Louis is very much an outlier among the cities we reviewed because we just outright exclude shelters from all zoning districts so that we are alone in that based on our review. Next slide. Here's just a summary use table of kind of what we saw when we were looking at these other cities. So you can see those six cities reviewed and then our existing context highlighted in blue. So of course, I mean, every city's zoning code is so different. It's actually really technically challenging to do this comparison. So this is, you know, probably not perfect in every way, this comparison, but gives you a sense. you a sense of how we stack up. And so you can see, it's really a mix of approaches in these use districts, but you know, are not allowed in any type of district is, you can see, these other cities just don't do that. Next slide. So that was some of the research that kind of informed the approach that we took, and now I want to describe that in a little bit more detail. So the, the new chapter related to special residential uses that's proposed in the resolution has three main things. So new definitions, clear site requirements, and then a new use table. So, you know, what, what do we do if we're not allowing in every district? How do we think about that? And for those who have kind of done a really deep study of the resolution, you'll see there's also just a lot of language that's kind of removing references to these uses and other parts of the code. That's really just cleanup, so all of this can be captured in a single place in a new chapter. Next slide, please. So the first piece here are the definitions, and I have written them out kind of to completion here. I don't want to in my presentation really detail these, but the intent instructuring all of them is that it would be very clear, kind of no matter the type of special residential use, that we can imagine what definition they falls under. So there would be a lot of predictability in the regulation and just clarity and transparency in how we administer these requirements, and we think that is really a best practice. So there are several proposed, the first definition is really just, you know, what is a special residential use? And in total, we define that, we define support services, and then all of the special residential uses themselves. So boarding house, dormitory, halfway house, rooming house, transitional housing, and then congregate shelter, which is a shelter, but you know, one or more sort of open sleeping areas furnished with beds or cots and so on, but also single room occupancy shelters we did separately define. So again, it would be clear about kind of what's regulated as what, because there are really different types of shelters and sort of trends or sort of changes in how service providers are trying to do their best to meet the needs of people experiencing homelessness. So we tried to kind of capture that full spectrum with clear definitions. Next slide. The second piece of what's proposed are the site requirements. So this first list here would apply to all special residential uses, so anything defined on that previous page, you can see the requirements that they would have to meet, and they would have to meet this, whether permitted by right or as a conditional use. The resolution does propose that all of these would be conditional use, but that's just a note about how these site requirements function. They're kind of a baseline, no matter what route you're going. So you can see the types of issues these address. So things like, you know, trash pickup and, and sort of trash management to ensure kind of sort of clean and proper operation of the spaces around these facilities. Of course, no selling of, you know, liquor, alcohol, no vending, no boards, mesh grates or other materials, a requirement that the premises shall not be issued a public nuisance notice, that there's compliance with the noise ordinance, a requirement for off-street parking space for, you know, for every three employees, and then also a note about existing facilities being grandfathered in. You know, basically, they were permitted prior to the implementation of these proposed new regulations, so just clarity that they should not be subject to them, because the permit, kind of the initial permit did not contemplate all of these things. But in summary, the intent was really to set clear standards, set high standards, set achievable standards based on kind of what we know about how providers and shelters work, and that these are a baseline requirement for all special residential uses to receive a permit and also to maintain that permit. So if a facility falls out of compliance with any one of these, they risk revocation of their permit. So, you know, if they don't come into compliance with these, these standards, they could have their occupancy permit withdrawn. Now, I think there's always an effort to allow facilities to come into good faith. This goes for all conditional uses or all uses that have specific conditions, but you know, these, these are really serious. If there's not compliance, revocation of a permit could be a consequence. But the overriding principle is, you know, help these uses sort of be integrated or be able to fit in with their surrounding context in different parts of the city. Next slide, please. So shelters specifically, both congregate and single room occupancy would be required to meet this additional set of site requirements. So all of those listed on the previous slide, but also these additional site requirements listed here, more tailored to the specific use. So that there should be one sleeping accommodation per person served, you know, clarity that those sleeping accommodations shall never exceed the occupancy limit, and that's determined by the International Building Code, by the way. And maybe now's a good time to mention that all of the other requirements of the building code would still have to be met and enforced. So none of this changes that. This really is about zoning and land use requirements that can be kind of fairly administered by our zoning section. The third here is that facilities shall demonstrate that there is a written operations plan for kind of adequately serving the, the needs of people using these facilities. The fourth is that every facility needs 24/7 contact information for somebody. The fifth is that anytime the facility is in use, there needs to be onsite supervision. And then the sixth, which I've highlighted in blue because it, it has been actually added since the proposed resolution was posted last Friday, there was some background work to get legal clarity on whether a distance requirement would be found to be legal, and we have, we kind of, in the meantime, have received an opinion that yes, that, that is an appropriate, legally appropriate approach. So we did add that in, a requirement that no shelter, whether single room occupancy or congregate, be located closer than 250 feet of an existing shelter facility. So you see that added in here, proposed to be added in. Next slide. So then the third piece here is the use table. So how do we propose these be allowed? And so not just shelters, right, but all of these different special residential uses, where should they be allowed by right or conditionally? And you can see what's proposed here, where uses would be allowed conditionally in, in most districts, with the exception of shelters where they are smaller. So that, that relates to kind of that key finding about how other cities regulate these uses to try to encourage smaller shelters, with the understanding that, you know, some, some people experiencing homelessness, you know, have maybe a preference for those or feel that their needs can be best met, but also that those facilities can be more easily integrated into their surrounding neighborhood context. So you see several districts where those smaller shelters would be permitted by right. Now, again, they would still have to meet all of the site requirements, but there would not be a conditional use hearing, which is part of the process for any conditional use permit. By the way, at conditional use hearings, additional requirements can be added. That creates a very kind of clear opportunity for the public to express feedback, both opponents but also supporters, to kind of make their case for the, the what and the why, and for neighbors to express concern, and for those concerns to be met through additional conditions or other site requirements. Those findings from hearings are reported to the Board of Public Service, which ultimately makes that determination about whether a conditional use permit would be granted. So that is the proposed use table. Next slide. And then I just wanted to make sure we had easy access to this, which is our zoning map for reference. You know, one thing to note is those A and B districts, which are kind of our lower-density residential districts, in the very light yellow and in the somewhat darker yellow, those do comprise a, an enormous portion of zoned land in our city. And so that, that is part of the reason that this resolution does propose, including those, in that use table for these special residential uses, is we thought it would be kind of a more forward-looking thing, not to eliminate sort of nearly half of the city from even the consideration to locate special residential uses. Next slide. And then here, I'm kind of adding to that comparison chart we had before, what we are proposing on the very far right. So you can see in the single-family residential or low-density residential districts, this is now again focusing just on shelters specifically, rather than special residential uses as a whole, because that is kind of, I think, where the greatest zoning policy change is being proposed here. Shelters would be conditional. And then in other districts, include excluding industrial districts, shelters, by and large commercial unless they are eight beds or fewer, in which case they would be permitted as of right, but still meeting all of those site requirements and having to continue to comply with those conditions outlined in the site requirements. You can see all of those footnotes here to kind of capture the complexity of this cross-city comparison, but wanted to provide this nonetheless. Next slide. As with all zoning matters, because the official public hearing is now held at the Planning Commission, we provide members of the public the opportunity to submit written comment in advance. We actually didn't receive any by the deadline. We, we have these deadlines, so we can kind of organize the comments we receive. We received one after the deadline, actually, in support of what is proposed here. Next slide. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, first off, we would do, I'll entertain a motion by the Commission to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner, by a second by Commissioner. Clark Robert, call for vote, please.
Previous roll.
We have a commissioner that has left us. We still have a quorum, so we should create a new vote.
Aye.
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 He's the one that's writing.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, public hearing is opened. At this point, there have been no names submitted to Michelle. At this point, I do have one person online. That is a gentleman or lady, I'm sorry, I only have the name Canard. Please identify yourself, your full name, and the organization or reason for speaking.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, my name's Canard Williams. I'm the organizing manager at Action St. Louis, and I'm speaking in favor of this proposal.
Okay, you have, all right ahead.
All right. Yeah, I'm testifying on behalf of our organization in support of the special residential use proposal. Many of you already know, our region is struggling to address the issue of supporting our unhoused neighbors in the city, particularly during winter months when existing shelter space and beds are already either filled or unavailable. Our organization believes that housing is a human right, and this proposal has great potential to help address a lot of issues around the lack of housing and homelessness that currently plague individuals and families in St. Louis City. I think by permitting service providers to create more shelter space for individuals in our community, this is especially important as we're experiencing higher eviction rates surpassing pre-pandemic levels and a lack of resources to support renters and other people who are currently navigating housing insecurity. So it's our hope that the Commission votes to approve of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Canard Williams. We appreciate that. With Action St. Louis, any other online at this time? I see none from Jonathan, no, none present. I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner, by a second by Commissioner Milber. Call for vote.
Previous roll.
Previous roll. Hearing any objections? Hearing no objections, but that previous roll, I'm sorry, public hearing is now closed. At this point, what we do is do go to questions from the commissioners, and obviously I start online with Alderman Cohn.
Yeah, thank you. I, I really, I'm kind of floored that there was only one person who testified during the public hearing on such a matter that can be of great importance to many neighbors. I am wondering, so I'm not sure who would be the appropriate person to answer questions regarding the policy. I mean, is that planning staff or zoning?
Yeah, I'll quickly jump in and to just say that we did kind of prepare an interdepartmental team to help answer questions. That includes myself. I believe Mary Hart Burton from the zoning section is on the line. We also have Director Adam Pearson with us as, as a starting point for answering questions.
Okay. So I guess I'll just kind of start off, note there would be no more platton petition process, just so I'm clear.
That is part of kind of what's contemplated to kind of outside of the zoning text amendment be introduced as a policy change, but the platton petition process, since it's not a zoning item, is not directly what's part of Planning Commission review this evening.
But underneath the proposed changes, most of these would be allowed, they would be permitted, so there wouldn't be any type of zoning requirement or platton petition process?
There would be the conditional use permit process and also the kind of establishment and enforcement of those site requirements, and then any additional site requirements or conditions added during the conditional use permit process.
But are the, so how are we ensuring that we are aware of who is using these properties for such a manner? So, you know, I mean, are individual organizations having to register themselves as shelters? Is there some sort of, you know, shelter registry to hold people accountable so that people know who to reach out to if there are, you know, behavioral issues or concerns or nuisances at these properties?
There would be, so one of those site requirements listed is the requirement that there be onsite supervision whenever these are open, and then also a 24/7 contact person. There hasn't been a discussion, and I'm not sure this would be a zoning item, though I'll let others correct me, about listing that registry in any location.
All right, just for the record, this is Dr. Adam Pearson. I'm the Director of the Department of Human Services. So to speak to the question about who would be using the facilities, it is a best practice in shelters nationwide to keep track of who was coming in and out of the doors. As was mentioned earlier in the presentation, some of these shelters, some of these housing programs may provide supportive services, and part of the supportive services package would be rigorous case management to ensure that the individuals using the shelter programs were referred out to permanent housing, other, you know, services in the area. And so typically in St. Louis, the process is that whoever a shelter program takes in has knowledge of who is using the facility, which is just kind of a basic safety practice.
Any?
So I don't think that that answers my question, though, around how are we tracking it?
And so typically in St. Louis, the process is that whoever a shelter program takes in has knowledge of who is using the facility, which is just kind of a basic safety practice.
Any?
So I don't think that that answers my question, though, around how are we tracking it. I mean, there's something, you know, it was mentioned that there would be, you know, one person sleeping onsite who's with an organization, but are they registering with the city? Are they registering with Health and Human Services? How are we supposed to know, you know, how many beds are being made available to people? How are we tracking this, you know, if there is no registration requirement? And then again, if there are behavioral issues there, you know, people would need a point of contact with whatever organization is renting out or utilizing that house as a shelter.
Now, I see Mary Hart Burton, the city's zoning administrator, has raised her hand. She can probably shed more light on the permitting process.
Thank you, Miriam. So to answer your question, first of all, even though some of the uses would be allowed as a use by right, they will all have a set of what we're calling site requirements that are detailed in the board bill that's attached to the resolution. So they'll all have to meet those requirements. The way that they will prove that they're meeting those requirements, it will be very similar to how we deal with marijuana uses. That was a new use that was introduced into the code. And what we do is when they make their application on our online portal, there's a question set that's designed for them to answer that they're meeting each of these. So, and then, for instance, Shane, in your question in regard to how will we make sure that there's only, you know, seven people or eight people, they'll have to put that in the application and then that application before the occupancy or the building permit can be issued, there will be a building inspector that will go through and they'll be the ones that verify that for us.
But they're not going to be doing that on an ongoing basis. There's no requirement that a building inspector check it monthly or quarterly or annually?
No, there is not a monthly or quarterly check.
Or even annual? Like, there's no follow-up visit there? We don't know if building even has the capacity to, like, do those types of checks. I'm coming from a perspective, well, I mean, respectfully, Mary, I mean, my whole ward is in a, you know, conservation district and there are buildings that, you know, I am certain are occupied and have never had a building inspector walk through them as long as I have been an older person. You know, they either haven't pulled a permit for occupancy or any of that. I mean, we have full-blown, you know, projects where people are renovating homes and they haven't even pulled permits, you know, and it's fighting hook, tooth, and nail just to get an inspector to, like, follow up with those issues, let alone, you know.
Has a supervisor. I would address that with their supervisor. Those issues can be addressed.
So along with that, so we're not requiring, you know, future inspections once the permit is granted, you know, if they even apply for a permit. I mean, here we're talking about single-family homes, we're talking about, you know, multifamily homes, you know, where people could have utilities in their names and not changing them over to an organization, not filing a permit and allowing, you know, these types of services to be offered. How are we going to address concerns of neighbors, you know, that feel like, you know, there's a lot of concerns that are happening? I mean, I'm really kind of struggling to understand how neighbors who have concerns are going to be able to address and remedy those concerns.
If I'm clear, Alderman Cohn, let me see if I can simplify your question. Who is the governing body of these, of this service? Is that the short end of that, Alderman Cohn?
Sure.
Maybe another question or answer that could help is how are those site requirements enforced over the life of a facility? I don't know if Mary Hart, if you can describe that process or how that works.
So when they apply, again, this goes back to the question set that will be part of the application process, it's not part of the board bill. When they apply, they'll have to answer the question sets and it'll be designed so that it captures all of the site requirements, just like we do with medical marijuana. There'll be the initial inspection before any of the occupancy permits are issued. And that will be a combination of if it requires a hearing, when it goes to the hearing, it'll be checked there. If it doesn't require hearing, the building inspector will check it. If we receive a complaint from anyone, then after the facility is open, we will do an investigation. It'll have to be a joint investigation between the zoning and the building inspector because the building inspector is the one that has right of entry. But we will do an investigation to make sure that they are complying with all of the site requirements and any additional conditions that might be placed on them when they go to a conditional use hearing.
Alderman Cohn?
Yeah, I mean, I have a ton of questions. All, I'll other commissioners ask theirs, and if you don't mind coming back to me, Mr. Terry, I'd appreciate it.
We will. With that, then we will go to alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
All right. Thank you. I too am surprised that there weren't a lot of, a lot of people signed up because my phone and my emails have been blowing up, especially since it was in the paper. So I'm balancing, right? Because we are, we're elected to advocate for our constituency basis, so I have to be a voice for them in addition to my own personal voice. And everybody knows my passion for second, third, fourth, fifth chances, unhoused, you know? And so it's not about that. I will say that if you've ever listened to me talk about this before, you know, planning petition is a trigger for me because planning petition for me, for my constituency, is the difference between something happening to them in their neighborhood as opposed to with them in their neighborhood. And I'll say right now, outside of a shelter, I have all of these kinds of homes or occupies or properties being occupied like this that did not go through a planning petition, that are occupied, that are nuisances, that constituents continue to say, how can they run this and operate this here without any kind of, you know, regulation? And I'm always going back and forth and trying to support them on that with our, absolutely with the support of our Public Safety Building Division and our Neighborhood Improvement Specialist. So I understand about who to report stuff to. But the problem is that's reactive and not proactive, again, for my role as advocating for my constituency base. So the revocation process in the city of St. Louis has been a nightmare for me, for my constituents. The times that I've had to try to have a department pull back or clawback on something for them, it's been almost null and void, almost disrespectful to my constituents most times. And the one time that we did have something happen, I repeat, it didn't come through what the departments, it should have come through. It came through an act of, you know, an act of what, just something that happened with the property owner themselves that took it into, you know, why we didn't have to end up continuing to fight for over years, right? And so the risk of revocation is, again, that's a trigger to me because if there's nothing replacing that planning petition process, and I know because I've been through that revocation process that it doesn't work, I need to be and feel sure that I will be able to tell and look my constituents in the face and say, we will be able to handle this this way in this process. Your voice will be heard in this process. I do understand the conditional use hearings, but I also understand that a lot of people miss, they sometimes hear about them after the fact and sometimes these things, again, a planning petition starts the conversation or other things might start the conversation. And it might be in the, in the operations part, in the application part that Mary Hart talked about and I, and again, I could, I have the utmost respect for Mary Hart Burton and the work that she does. So I trust her work. It's just for me, the unassurance going into it is not enough for me to be okay with it because, again, I had to look my constituency in the face and say, you know, no, you won't have to worry about this. You won't have to be concerned with this part because we'll have this in place for that. Thank you, Dr. Pearson, for talking about the operation. Hopefully, I know you said may, may have that continuum of care. I believe that any, anything like this, any shelter or even the other dormitories, the board, they all should have some kind of continuum of care process because nobody would want that to be their last step, right? So we want to have stuff in place for them. So I don't know if there's a way to have that as one of the, as part of the application process or part of one of the conditions when we're doing this. But I think that all of that, and then I think that'll also help ease my colleague, Alderman Cohn's concerns about the, being able to put your hands and be able to connect with somebody immediately if something is going on, right? And so I don't know if, you know, and I don't know if any of these things may have responses. I'm just voicing my concerns, my, some of my hesitation with this. Again, it's not about meeting the needs of our unhoused because I'm there, right? And everybody knows I'm there. But I also want to make sure I'm meeting the need of a constituent who has concerns about a property like this or actually living through this right now, right? Right? Living through this right now and they don't have any recourse, they don't have any, they don't feel like their voice is being heard. And now it's like we're opening it up even more to them. And then the last thing, this might be a question that someone can answer, but one of my constituents also brought up the fact that nonprofits, they don't have to pay property tax. So as it relates to something like this, opening this up, if say, has anybody thought about what the impact will be on our personal property tax? If, say, you know, this, people even began to just change their properties over and say, I'm doing this and doing that on a nonprofit under organization instead of just being a homeowner since they can do this now, that was a concern. Again, I didn't know if somebody can answer that, or if not, maybe we can come back to that. And then I do want to speak to that building occupancy and building inspector piece that my colleague brought up. So in this new ward footprint, there are areas that are building, but they don't have to get occupancy permits and they don't have to get building inspections when they have people in. That's a recipe for disaster to open up something, to me, in my mind, unless you can make me see different, to have something open up like this. And then all those big, this area has big, beautiful, amazing properties in it and now they can be transitioned into something like this, even not saying something like this is bad, but without the protections and without the regulations of a building inspection and occupancy permit.
Any other comment?
I don't think so, unless they say something else. I hope I said everything.
With that, thank you, alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Commissioner Boaz.
Well, I didn't know if anybody had any answer about either the tax question or the...
I'm not sure I do have more information on that tax question you raised, but also wanted to open it up to others on the team who may.
Mary, any? Mary, done?
Well, I hope nobody thinks, I mean, for me, it's an issue for me, you know, I mean, not on the unhoused, not on the shelter, not on their side, it's an issue on the impact to our taxpayers here in the city of St. Louis. That's all I'll say with that.
This is Director Pearson again. One of the things that I'll note, and I want to thank you because you are my alderwoman and so I appreciate that, a little bit biased here. One of the things that I also wanted to highlight is that I recognize that there may be concerns by alderpeople on possible issues that could arise if you have a smaller shelter or rooming house or dormitory, you know, whichever item is in these definitions in your neighborhood. I also want to add that there may be a lot of folks in the alderpeople's wards who actually need these services but cannot access them because there is not sufficient supply. Across the city, across the nation, as we know, there is more demand for shelter than there is supply. There's more demand for affordable housing than there is supply. I think that one of the reasons we are wanting to put this in motion is to actually meet a need where there is currently insufficient solutions for it. And so I think what I would just sort of reframe is that there are folks in every single ward who could make use of these smaller shelters or these programming. And if they can make use of them, perhaps they can become a little bit more independent. Perhaps the case management services that they receive can get them back on their feet. Also want to highlight another issue that Alderman Cohn brought up. I think there was a mention of individuals with mental illness. I wanted to quickly, if I could, destigmatize the mental illness conversation. I recognize the concerns, I empathize with concerns. I'm a mental health clinician by trade. The American Psychological Association has indicated in their research in the past 10 years that between one-fifth and one-fourth of adults in the United States have a diagnosable mental illness. And so these are our neighbors, these are our parents, our friends, our children. And so simply having a mental illness does not make one a destructive member of society or a problematic member of society. It is an illness just like a lot of other illnesses. And I think that one of the reasons that we need shelters and one of the reasons that we wanted to make this process a little bit less onerous is to enable individuals who are unhoused, who might have a mental illness, to come inside from the cold because a lot of times with schizophrenia, for example, it's hard to rationalize and it's hard to think and it's hard to come up with next steps on your housing plan. So I did want to say that and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pearson. With, okay, with that, I just wanted to be sure, with that, Commissioner Boaz, please.
I guess I'm going to make a statement before I ask a question. It seems to me that our system is broken right now. It's not working and what I've heard both of the aldermen say is that there are unpermitted shelters existing in the system right now so that having proper regulations wouldn't necessarily increase that in ways I think it would actually provide opportunities for better regulation and monitoring of these facilities. And I like the approach of trying to integrate it into more neighborhoods so that it's more consistent around the city rather than burdening, you know, particular neighborhoods with larger shelters. My only question was actually about the two, well, two questions. Do you think changes in what's been proposed can better address the two, the concerns brought up by the aldermen? And I guess that's for all of you.
Yeah, I've been thinking about that.
Put you on the spot.
Well, no, I mean, that's the reason we have these discussions, of course. Unfortunately, none specifically are springing to mind for me in terms of how the zoning regulations can better address these concerns. That's just my mind. I don't know if others have ideas about how to improve what's been proposed.
I guess my feeling is it's a departmental and actually a budgetary challenge to make sure we're staffing departments well enough to address the concerns. The only question I had was about the 250 feet. What made 250 feet the right number?
Yeah, we considered many numbers and as a group arrived at this modest spacing requirement, understanding that kind of that would overlay onto all of the other, you know, re...
to make sure we're staffing departments well enough to address the concerns. The only question I had was about the 250 feet. What made 250 feet the right number?
Yeah, um, we considered many numbers and as, as a group arrived at, this modest spacing requirement, understanding that kind of that would overlay onto all of the other, you know, realities about accessing available properties. We didn't want to create an undue burden on providers who have already challenges finding available sites at the right time where they can make the funding work. So I'll, I'll say that, but also open it up to either, um, Mary or Dr. Pearson.
All right, that was a really specific question.
Fair. Where did that number come from?
Commissioner Bradley has left. Uh, Commissioner Garminia online, any questions?
Sorry about that. Having trouble unmuting. Um, really appreciate, Miriam, your presentation as to be transferred as part of this working group. So, um, I really think it's important that we treat special residential uses like housing. And, uh, I think if, when people take a look at the definitions, uh, and closer look, you know, we're really trying to distinguish why should we be treating housing that's different, housing differently, whether they charge for rent or not, uh, for zoning, for zoning purposes. So I think that's, uh, I think there's some very good points that alderpeople have made and that are outside the purview of this conversation. I look, really look forward to, uh, the Board of Aldermen reforming and improving and providing accountability for, uh, code enforcement, for the revocation process, all the community engagement, like our community engagement, uh, opportunities to give feedback on land uses, on, uh, on how, on, on operators. Those are all really, uh, something that's important. And I really, uh, we spent a lot of time focusing on the land use implications of treating housing differently based on whether they charge rent, whether they charge or require compensation or not. And I really want, you know, I have people in my life with mental illness. I have people in my life. I'm, but I'm a parent, a SOPS parent, and the people that would be served well by this legislation are friends of the family. They're, you know, they're all around us. So I really hope we can focus on that and, and focus on what the, you know, what it means to be, uh, to open up the zoning. Sorry, did not put crying on a.
No, you're entitled to, you're entitled to that, Commissioner. Because this is a personal issue for a lot of folks here. If you want to hold, if you want to hold yourself, I'll come back if you'd like.
I do want to, I just want to finish my, my thought. I think it's, I really see this as it's a special residential use. It's with services, but it, at the end of the day, it's housing. And, um, I think, uh, we should treat it much more similarly to other kinds of housing. Yes, we should hold operators accountable, um, in providing sufficient services when they take on, uh, this kind of responsibility. But that's not a zoning issue. Um, it's a enforcement issue. And, uh, that's something we can do. You know, I think we, we have further legislation to do to improve that at the Board of Aldermen, but not necessarily here at the planning commission. I'm sorry, with that, I'll, I'll, uh, pass the mic. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garminia. Uh, Commissioner Milberg, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Um, so building off of Commissioner Garminia's thoughts that she shared, and thank you for sharing those, Commissioner. I think that's really powerful and it brings it back to the point that this is a policy that would impact human beings. Um, and so first things for, um, recognizing the undertone that I think I also picked up on too, which is the enforcement focus of some of the comments of the alders, um, that were shared. Certainly fair questions. I think that enforcement is a different focus than what this policy is focused on, but it certainly is an important part of the conversation, right? And so whether it's done through, um, you know, looking at, you know, the building code or looking at, you know, appropriations or whatnot, it does seem like that's an important part of, you know, the broader picture. But I, I'm not sure that, you know, within the zoning context, it, it's necessarily a square fit. Going to the, the question of, you know, who this impacts, um, I, uh, Miriam, if I could, I just wanted to confirm. Um, in the information you presented, you said that in 15 years, um, there hasn't been a single shelter that's been through, approved, or rather that has made it through the platting petition process. That's correct, 15 years. Okay. So that's a pretty stringent prohibition firewall. Um, and then you also had data, I think it was what, 20% of St. Louis public school families are currently experiencing, um, homelessness or are unhoused in some capacity. Was that figure right?
Yes, that's information provided on their website.
Got it. Okay, cool. Um, and then questions for Adam, if you wouldn't mind, just to further understand, who are we talking about when we talk about our unhoused neighbors in our city? And we talked about, obviously, it's families with children. Um, you know, you alluded to, you know, of course, you know, the, the point that Hesmer raised where we know individuals who have mental illness are certain times more likely to experience homelessness, unfortunately. But who else is it that is unhoused? Like, what do we know? Is it children? Is it domestic violence survivors? People who've served our country? I mean, who, who are they?
All of the above, um, from any career path, any walk of life. So in my history, I was a shelter operator with a nonprofit in South City, and, uh, we ran across all sorts of folks. Primarily, single men are, is the, the major demographic of individuals that we see on the street. But we do also see a lot of families, um, certainly with younger children. We see individuals who are transitioning out of the foster care system. We see, uh, some families who are recovering or surviving domestic violence. Obviously, a, a fair number of individuals who are unhoused do have some sort of mental illness. The vast majority have some sort of major long-term health condition, uh, that can be debilitating. Individuals with major disabilities, short-term disabilities. Important to note that the majority of individuals who find themselves unhoused are unhoused for less than three months. So a lot of individuals, perhaps because of a divorce or because of a tornado knocking over their domicile, they find themselves without housing and then they're able to get back on their feet. Certainly, some of these, um, definitions and shelter projects that we highlighted today will be able to serve some of, of those individuals. A smaller proportion of individuals who experience homelessness, between 10 and 20%, are individuals who spend a longer time unhoused, perhaps a year or longer, and they have some sort of major illness or disability, uh, that precludes them from being successful in housing. So a very long answer to a short question is, it's just about anybody. A lot of us are living paycheck to paycheck. We could find ourselves unhoused if, for whatever reason, the economy goes down. And certainly, as what is alluded, alluded to earlier, the eviction rates are increasing. And so, uh, I think around half of the individuals that we had served in the past are employed. They're unhoused, but they are employed. They might be going to school. They might be in counseling, receiving services. And so they're not just kind of sitting around doing nothing. These are individuals who are trying to get back on their feet.
Great. Thank you for that. And one quick follow-up if I could. So for unhoused individuals in our city or people who become unhoused, if they can't find space in a shelter right now, what do they do? Where do we go? What do we know about that? How that works in the city?
Well, unfortunately, um, we don't have, um, a sufficient number of shelter beds for every single person who is unhoused. And so a lot of individuals may spend the evening in an abandoned or dilapidated building. They might sleep on a family member's couch. Some individuals, especially when it's really cold out, they might instead go to emergency departments for housing. They might stay in a, a park, for example. And so I think individuals find anywhere that they can go where they might be semi-safe or at least, or at least as safe as they, uh, believe they can be because they don't have housing. It is far and above safer for somebody to be, somebody to be inside in the summers and the winters, you know, um, all year round, even if they have somewhere consistent to stay rather than a dumpster or an alley or, uh, a park somewhere.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, no further questions.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. So I'll preface that what I'm about to ask, I do think is somewhat outside of the purview of, uh, the zoning that we're discussing. And I, I certainly have a heart for the community that we're talking about. But I, I also want to note that similar to, uh, our low-income neighbors and family members and community members, uh, who occupy affordable housing, oftentimes their needs aren't met because of the lack of capacity of the operator. And whether we have the laws that enable a better lifestyle for them or not, if we don't have the appropriate operators, then they end up shouldering, shouldering the burden of the problem. So my question here, and we've, we've talked a lot about whether or not something is enforcement or part of this discussion, but I think equally important with enforcement is entitlement. Um, and this is, and this is a conversation about entitlement because that's what we grant to someone, uh, that can show on paper that they comply with our zoning requirements. Um, and my question is, how are we ensuring the, the capacity of the operator so that they do not, uh, put the community that we are advocating for more at risk by operating essentially a scattered site version of what is usually heavily concentrated right now? Similar to affordable housing, it's a much easier to manage a multifamily, a commercial multifamily complex than scattered site housing. You have to have a higher capacity to manage that scattered site housing. And I think that challenge will, will appear with this conversation as well. And we have to confirm, affirm, reconfirm, reaffirm that we are entitling the right operators to, um, create these special residential, residential units. So I may have overlooked it, but my question is, how do we confirm upon granting the entitlement the capacity of the operator? And then I just want to second my, um, my co-commissioners in saying that we, we do need to do a lot of work on the enforcement side of things. And it has to go hand in hand with this to not exacerbate the issues that we see in our city.
I think I would turn your question over to Mary because that speaks to the application.
Yeah.
Process. So Mary, would you want to address that?
So again, I think that, that we will address the number and the occupancy load through both the permitting process and the question set. And then the building inspector will do his thing when he goes to do the inspection for the occupancy permit.
So if I can just clarify, that to me is about the building. Even the operating plan that's noted in there is about that particular site. I'm asking, how do we ensure the capacity of the operator that is, uh, putting in a request for the permit?
Yeah, I know we had some discussion as a group about that operations plan and what ought to be included in it because there, we didn't want to put the zoning office in the position of enforcing something, um, that they can't enforce. So there was discussion about, um, how to kind of fine-tune that both in the language proposed in this new chapter, but then also kind of operationally, how, how would that play out? So a little bit of discussion there about, you know, what does that question set look like? That hasn't been, um, fully, fully drafted, I don't, I don't believe. But I know there, there has been discussion about, um, making sure, kind of, there's a point of collaboration between the Department of Human Services and the zoning office to make sure that that question set asks the right things. But again, kind of wanted to set some boundaries to ensure that the zoning office was being asked to look at things that they could reasonably look at in a, in a fair manner that kind of matches, um, their, their policies and expertise.
Does that reach?
Yeah, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Uh, prior to the chair speaking, I want to return back to Alderman Cone to see if there were any follow-up questions at this point before I speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate the opportunity. And, um, you know, I, I want to reaffirm, you know, my commitment to, uh, this community, to affordable housing. And, you know, I've said it over and over and over again, I also believe that housing is a human right. I want to make sure that we are doing so in a manner that is thoughtful to the residents of our neighborhoods as well. You know, I need to make sure that as an alderperson, that the neighbors that I represent, you know, to my colleague's point, you know, not only understand, you know, what's happening, but how they can address concerns when they come up. And so, you know, I really do appreciate the conversation that has taken place here. I am very much in favor of, you know, trying to break the barriers down that our city government has put up for generations at this point in time. But I also get concerned about things like concentration of poverty, which was one of the reasons, you know, I brought that up and probably part of the reason why there is a, you know, requirement for distance between these because too often time we have situations in our city where nonprofits or, you know, other entities are buying properties in low-income distressed neighborhoods, not providing wraparound services to the individuals and families that are living in those communities and oftentimes actually end up evicting them as well. And when they get evicted from their shelter of last resort, their home of last resort, where do they end up? They end up in our alleyways. They end up squatting in vacant properties in these communities. So I do very much appreciate the effort that has gone into this to get us to the point where we're at today to have this conversation. But I think that we need to be more thoughtful in terms of the questions and concerns that have been brought to, you know, brought up during this conversation at this point in time. You know, I think that this is something that is, you know, a wonderful, wonderful conversation. And, you know, frankly, you know, we should see some, you know, version of this, uh, passed out by the commission and by the, you know, Board of Aldermen. But I think that I'm not prepared to put my, my name associated with that at this point in time just because I think that there still are some unanswered questions out there from, uh, members of this own, you know, very commission at this point in time. So, you know, I, a, and I also just kind of have to, you know, take a, a personal note here. In my original comments, I don't recall mentioning mental health. I, I recall, you know, saying something along the lines of behavioral health concerns, not mental health concerns. But, uh, you know, certainly I, I have family members that have struggled with mental health. I, I've, I have, uh, you know, had situations in my own life where I have, you know, lived paycheck to paycheck or have been on the verge of being homeless myself. So I really, I, I kind of have to take a little bit of umbrage to some of the comments that are being made here. You know, I represent a community where we have a huge percentage of our population are young people, kids who are living in poverty right now. You know, this is, it's a concern of mine and I want to make sure that we're lifting up our neighbors, all of them, not just some of them, all of them. But I think we need to make sure that we're also not concentrating and instituting policies or concentrating poverty so that we perpetuate a cycle that shouldn't be happening in the first place. So, you know, I, again, you know, really do appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the questions, even those that have gone unanswered at this point in time and look forward to the continued conversation.
Thank you, Alderman Cone. Uh, there's a request from Alderwoman Clark Huber to respond to that.
I just had a few things I wanted to say again with this. I, I want to bring it up one more time because I'm not against this at all. I'm not against. I'm not against it being done decent and in order. I absolutely have the utmost trust and faith in our building commissioner Frank Oswald, our zoning commissioner Mary Hart Burton, absolutely, our department of human services director, Dr. Pearson. And if all of them could look me in the face and say, yes, 100%, this will be okay, when you go out to your constituency, you can, anybody who has concerns, you can say, well, this is what we're going to do for this, I will believe them and I would trust them. Absolute trust in the planning division, right? But respectfully, no one else on this board would receive the calls that me and Alderman Cohn would receive. Even the mayor's office would receive it, but respectfully, Ms. Casey Milburg wouldn't receive them, okay? So, you have to understand where we're coming from with this, right? And that we just, for me, it'll be about educating the community, getting the tools out there, making sure we get with our neighborhood organizations and strengthen them, and so that if we're going to move forward as a city like this, I understand that it's not one of the others, it's all of us together, it's not an "and." It's the, I mean, it's not an "or," it's the "and" when you're talking about this. The families and children that we're all referring to, as families and children that are on the other side of this too, that are being victimized right now while we're in this meeting by, again, this is a operation piece, it's not the zoning piece, and I get that, but they do go hand-in-hand. And a lot of times when we do pass legislation down here, we make sure if we're going to pass this, then we want to pass this to make sure that we are covering both sides of it. It's just a piece of that. And then I want to make sure I reiterate that, again, I'm not against this, I'm supporting this. But there are specific areas in the 10th Ward that do not, you do not have to have a building inspection or occupancy permit right now, today. And if that's not changed before this, and these areas, it's not just in my ward, it's in other areas, and these areas are already underserved, under-resourced areas that go unlooked and have gone unnoticed for a while. This is what I hear from the new constituency base that I have. So, out of advocacy and protection for them, I want to make sure that that's on the record again about those areas that you don't have to go through that. So, the reassurance of the application and building inspection and all that does not apply to those areas. That can be fixed, right? I'm not saying it's going to be like that. I'm hoping to fix that, at least in the area that I can, and work with my colleagues to fix the other ones. But just right now, again, as we look broader on what this is going to mean, I want to make sure that was mentioned again, and thank you for letting me do that.
Commissioner Garmedia had her hands, has her hand up, and I will return. Back to, because the issue is so critical, we cannot rush through this.
Yes, I had a follow-up question for Mr. Pearson, if he's still.
He's still present. Dr. Pearson is still present, yes.
I'm here.
Yes, I was wondering, I think a lot of the questions that we've heard so far from the other commissioners that are around the operations and like the operations plan, and I just wanted to have your perspective on how many shelter providers or people who provide these special residential uses receive funding from the Department of Human Services and thereby are, and like, what are the kinds of other requirements there, they, or the, you know, enforcement powers that your department has around their operations?
Sure. So, the Department of Human Services is, we are what is called a grant recipient from the United States Housing and Urban Development Department. And so, we get funding from the city for emergency shelter, permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, all of these types of programs, and ship it out to providers in the community. Each year, we fund, you know, between 12 and 14 programs, or at least emergency shelters in the community. But we fund dozens and dozens of projects, I think upwards of around $40 million in contracts that we manage with organizations in the community that serve the unhoused population. And so, just within DHS and all of these providers, we have methods of enforcement when we enter into contracts with them. So, if an organization wants to receive funding from DHS, ultimately, you know, from HUD, part of the contract process is providers giving us their financials and an audit. If they have a single audit, they do that. Operations plans, you know, if they, if they're operating 24/7, there are questions they may answer about how they're securing the site, describing case management. And then after that contract is executed, there is a compliance piece of the work that DHS does, where we not only do fiscal compliance and making sure that we receive the billings from these organizations, but there's also the programmatic compliance piece. And so, we do have staff members who go out into the community, into the shelters, into these housing programs, and just take a look around, chat with residents, chat with staff, just to make sure that they are delivering on what was required of them in that contract. So, so that piece, I would say, is regulated fairly well. I think that we could always, you know, we are hiring for a contract compliance officer right now, and so I think that we're wanting to make that process a little bit more robust. For these programs that wouldn't receive DHS funding, you know, willing to explore what the compliance looks like, I will say this, we are, DHS is engaging more often with what's called the Continuum of Care, which is an organization, a, an amalgamation of agencies in St. Louis that serve the unhoused population. And part of the work of collaboration with the Continuum of Care is that that is a single umbrella organization made up of groups that would be opening up these sorts of shelters. And so, I think as part of the compliance piece, I would love it if there was an opportunity to engage these providers as they fall underneath the umbrella of the Continuum of Care, working with the COC to, you know, strengthen and bolster their policies for how to hold organizations in compliance if they want membership in that organization. So, it's kind of an ongoing conversation, but again, that's sort of, that's sort of outside of and parallel to that enforcement piece that you had mentioned before.
Thank you. With that, there was one more hand up, and then I'll speak. Mary, you had a statement or comment you wanted to make?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question is really directed towards Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. I heard you mention a couple of times that there are areas in your ward where they are not required to have occupancy permits or building inspections. Are you referring to, I'm not sure, did you inherit the part of the city that used to be former Alderman Kennedy's Ward, who elected not to put portions of his ward into housing conservation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that everyone understands that housing conservation is designed for residential living. The moment someone would apply to do something like a shelter or a rooming house or a boarding house, they're going to be required to have a commercial occupancy permit. So, they will get an inspection, even if it's not in a housing conservation district. It will still have an inspection.
Thank you so much, Mary. See, that's why I love Mary. You see what I'm saying? But I'm, but Mary, me and you, yeah, Mary, I'm so glad you clarified that, because now that means me and you need to have some additional offline conversations about the properties that are definitely commercial properties that have not been.
Okay.
Okay, but thank you so much for that clarity and for, you know, you must be reading my mind, because you know that's how I am, especially for people listening, to make sure that we lead with facts and the history of it, and so that people will know, and then we can move forward better, right, once we know.
Thank you. Alderman Cohn, you had another comment or statement that I need to move to Don.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, so I'm just curious, you know, one of the, you know, conversation points has been, you know, around the operational plan and just the supportive services. So, is there an appetite to make this a permissive use for organizations that receive DHS funding versus just opening it up across the entire city to like any quote-unquote service provider who may or may not have the capacity to provide those supportive services?
I think, yeah, let me say, I don't know about that. I wouldn't say that I'm in support of that or not in support. I would say that I don't know, simply because the idea is to incentivize smaller operators to get in the game as far as sheltering. And DHS is primarily a funding body, and so, you know, our role is to fund organizations. And so, if they don't receive funding for us or from us, I am not sure, I'm not sure what that compliance profile looks like. So, I don't know if I could answer that question right now. I'm sorry.
Well, can I follow up on that quickly? I just have one question, just for clarity, because so, that's if they receive funding from you all, right? Or what, can someone have something like this and not receive funding from you all, and then they wouldn't be subjected to the same accountability? And since they're going to be smaller, maybe they don't need the funding from you all, or they have other funding? I'm just, just for clarity, would they still have to go through the same compliance as a provider that does have, does receive your funding?
So, that depends on what their funding sources were. So, if they did not receive funding from DHS, that doesn't necessarily preclude them from receiving funding from another body. And so, that other body might hold them accountable like DHS would if they received funding from us. Some of these organizations receive funding directly from HUD. Maybe there is a local foundation that gives them funds. They would have their own set of accountability standards for that. But to enter into a contract with DHS means that there is a specific set of requirements that you need to meet in order to receive funding. I can't promise all of those requirements would be similar across the board for other funding bodies.
But they would be required to work within the operational plan of the city of St. Louis?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Don, and we'll recognize Don, and I'll finish my statements.
Thank you. I'll be, one, brief, okay? Two, remember, this is the first step in the process. We're here tonight, we're doing a first step. We've heard a lot of discussions about the rulemaking and the enforcement of the rules. They're sort of interchangeable, of course, but not completely related to the step that we're doing under the zoning code. Another important thing, I will say, as you've heard Miriam's presentation, was not only about the existing of our current rules, our current city, and these future rules, that there was an element of what the research was done by Miriam and the whole team working on this, of looking at best practices, looking at what other cities doing, looking at cities that are comparable to us, looking at cities in a package of cities that they might be a little bit different in one way but comparable in another, to understand what those cities have done. And so, that's been consummated in what's before you tonight as a first step. And with that, it will be an action of the planning commission as to how you go forward.
Thank you, Don. There, a friend of mine, Serena Mohammed, reminded me one day, the folks in the room are often the ones trying to solve the problem, but they're so far distant from the problem. And saying that, I want to thank Dr. Adams for being here. You are sitting at that precipice of issues. You're dealing with it every day. Alderman Cohn, and Alderman Hubbard, Clark Hubbard, they're sitting at the front line of that. I think Commissioner Garmedia talked about it within her family, these that are dealing with it. Many of us are dealing with this issue. But the question I have first is, are we asking those providers what makes it easier for them to provide services, remove the barriers, and still be compliant with what we need as a community to provide those services? Because we don't need to increase enforcement if we set it up so they don't have to worry about that. So, can you address that a little bit? And then my second statement, I'll leave it at this, thank you for de-stigmatizing mental and behavioral health. As you said, it could happen to anybody at any time for any reason. Our children, as we just got reported, our poverty level has gone up 12% in the last year, and those things create issues. So, I just want to have you close out with that, you know, addressing those two kind of conversations, if you will.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Could you rephrase the first question you asked about?
Is, are we engaging providers of these services in what we're trying to recreate? Because they're trying to fix a problem. Are they being part of that solution? Are we telling them, this is what you need to do?
So, are you speaking as kind of a wish list or what we're currently doing now?
Both.
Okay, so what we are currently doing now, for providers who are engaging in these services in the community, there are ongoing discussions within the department, outside of the department, about how to make services better. There are a lot of partners who are engaged in that work, not just service providers, but data partners who are helping us to track numbers, organizations who are doing street outreach and are, you know, holding our feet to the fire about, you know, the numbers that we give out in shelter availability. So, there's ongoing conversations with a number of different partners for how to do better work. These calls are aggregated, they are disaggregated, these are, you know, folks within the COC, folks outside of the COC. I think writ large, when we talk about ending homelessness, what, I think what the common thread is across all of these agencies is that we want to see people housed. Some of us do things a little bit differently, depending on the practice, but we want to see people housed ultimately. And I think that the better we do as far as coordination, the better the numbers look, obviously, but the more people we get off the street. So, I think there's some of that internal and external dialogue about how to coordinate services a little bit more effectively. I think looking forward, you know, again, willing to have a conversation about enforcement and how we collaborate with service providers to keep them accountable. You know, it was referenced that we've had some conversations about that, but I think for the purposes of this meeting, we didn't really delve into that, just because that's, you know, again, that's kind of an enforcement issue, and we knew that it might go to the Board of Aldermen for a little bit more discussion. So, willing to have a conversation about that, but I think writ large, as a system, we are all incentivized to do good work, to do better work. For one, that's kind of where the funding lies, if we're able to be, you know, if we're able to perform exceptionally at the work that we do, and also because we all want to see results. A number of providers have buried individuals, or have been to funerals where we've had to bury clients on the streets. And I think, you know, I can speak for a number of providers out there by saying, we don't want to attend any more unnecessary funerals if we have to. If we can get folks inside in the winters, if we can get folks inside in the summers, then I think that goes a long way towards solving the problem and saving lives.
Thank you. As I called Miriam forward, I want to echo one thing. I think both Alderman Cohn and Alderman, Alderwoman said, decentralizing these services are better than centralized, because you run into much bigger problems when you go, try to go into a neighborhood, and we get the typical, not in my backyard. But there are a lot of these services that are available in neighborhoods that are unseen by those neighbors and don't know they're there, but they are still providing a good service. So, with that, I call you to the podium to give us what the recommendation is, and we will act appropriately in accordance with the commission.
So, the staff recommendation is that the planning commission finds the zoning text change detailed in the resolution defining and regulating special residential uses to be in conformity with the city's strategic land use plan, and we recommend, and that the planning commission recommends approval to the Board of Aldermen.
Thank you. With that, the commission can make any motion that they choose to make.
I'd simply say, so moved.
Second.
It was moved by Commissioner Bass, seconded by, I didn't, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. I just heard the name.
Will you repeat what the motion was?
It is to follow recommendations. It is to follow recommendations. With that call for vote, please.
Epstein.
Aye.
Aye.
He's excused himself.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Recognizing that our motion still moves to the Board of Alderman, and this is not the solution to a problem. This is a, this is a help to that solution. So we're moving forward in that. Don, are you ready to say something? Did you want to say something before we get to the, there's one more informational item that needs to be presented?
There's going to be one more informational item. It's a fun big thing. It's updating the strategic land use plan. But before we go to that, commend everybody's for their hard work. We've heard from two elected representatives, very commentary with both observations and concerns, but also a spark that we do better in the future. This is that spark to get something moving better in the future. And I commend all the people that have been the hardworking on the team to put this together, for Miriam orchestrating it, for Mary and her staff being diligent in it, and all the other people that have participated. It has been a long day. I will report to the planning commission that we normally begin at 5:30. The preservation board normally begins at 4:30, and their meetings almost routinely go to this time of night. So yes, we do have one more item. It's an informational item. We could take a short break and then do that, if you'd like.
Well, depending on the length of that presentation, I want to say we keep going.
Okay.
Yes.
While she's doing that, I do want to say one thing to those that are listening. There were several people asking to make comments after we closed the open session, the open session?
The public.
The public session. Recognize, I would like to urge you, but according to guidelines, that is your opportunity to speak. This does not mean that you cannot send your concerns or comments into the, into the commission, but at this time, according to the guidelines, once that's opened and closed, it is that. We must follow that rule. So with that, we will go to the next.
I'll also remind you that as we talked about this being the first step, this is a recommendation to the Board of Alderman for legislation to be considered, and it'll be a public input in that process.
Thank you. Are the stakes coming to?
Miriam, the floor is yours again.
Let's be fast, Don.
Well, most of this presentation won't be, won't be mine, but I do want to introduce our guest here and provide a little bit of the context and just express my excitement that they're here with us. Don has mentioned several times in his executive director's report over the past several months that we are entering into a process to do really a comprehensive overhaul to the strategic land use plan, which is the land use element of our city's comprehensive plan. We selected, in a competitive process, a consulting team. It's an interdisciplinary team made of both national and local experts. And tonight, we have with us Dan Daoka, who's the principal of the lead firm on that team, Interboro Partners, as well as Liz Kramer with Public Design Bureau, a local partner in the process that's going to help with the engagement facilitation and just kind of local context setting in this. And so I can't express how excited we are to have them working with our city on this. We're very excited. We're very excited. This is our opportunity, doesn't come along often, to think really long-term and systemically about land use in our city, how we adapt to big challenges, how we seize major opportunities through land use and planning. And so Dan will be sharing a presentation of kind of introducing their team, the process before us, and kind of what it means and what it looks like.
And we're scared because Don's going to play show and tell.
We're going to play a little show and tell. See the words up there, City of St. Louis Strategic Land Use Plan. Wait, actually, this is a document from 1973, St. Louis Development Program. Hold on. It is, one of the folks cited in here still has a desk in SODC that comes in every day.
Oh, Lord.
And Don, if you're going to do it, stand in front of the little.
Sorry. I thought I could. So, true to that, true also is the Planning and Urban Design Agency was created in 1999 because things had slipped in terms of planning. Fortunately, a good thing had happened for American Cities. In 1974, Community Development Block Rant started to become, and the planning activity was taken over by the Community Development Agency. Much of that, in their commission, was dealing with funding sources, but also acting as the planning commission. So as I move us to 1999, when the planning commission was reconstituted, and you guys were created following local and state law, we became a 13-member board, majority citizen, hard to fill all those spots, and the chairman is a citizen. Prior was the head of the Community Development Agency. Things had been deteriorating in terms of planning. So thankfully, we started the agency. We created the new planning, planning commission. And soon into the 2000s, Mayor Slay is elected, and one of his chief people in his administration was, and for the election, was a former director of the Community Development Agency. And in that regard, she knew about the value of planning. At the time for campaign, it was mentioned the city should make a strategic land use plan. Well, we moved into doing that. And what we did is create this document that you use, publicly vetted, we approved it as the planning commission. And why I look at that word and talk about strategic land use is it's adopted by the planning commission. On the wall behind me, it's posted up there, and it said it's a legal document. It's a legal document because of you guys. And it's a legal document, although we use that name, that it's been court tested to be the land use element of the city's comprehensive plan, or general plan, the more planning terms for something that we do. And so that's what it is. That's what we're looking at. We've employed this firm that's going to talk about what they're doing and looking at the strategic land use plan. But at the end of this process, as we say it's the strategic land use plan, a component of the city's comprehensive plan, we may switch it around and say it's the city's comprehensive plan with a land use component. And the other thing about that and our rules and what we do is you saw that things are compared to the comprehensive plan. We do that. So one of the things that we'll be looking at is things that come about and are generated, such as the economic justice plan. Can we, in this process, be thinking about how it's incorporated in the update that we'll do 14 months from now? So with that, turn it over to you guys.
Thanks, Don. Thanks for that history lesson. I actually didn't know all of that. Very, very good to hear. I would pay good money for that 1973 plan, actually. So thank you. It's an honor to be here tonight. Thanks for the opportunity, Chairman Strout there and other members of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about the strategic land use plan of the sloop. Actually, we were disappointed to learn it wasn't pronounced slup. We've got a lot of good puns lined up, like what's slup?
And please give your name and or.
Slup date. Yes. My name is Dan Daoka, principal of Interboro, and we're the team that's leading this, this project. And I'm not going to take up too much of your time. In fact, here's a quick agenda for you. Uh-oh, this was working a second ago. In the meantime, next, please. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna, gonna just introduce the team, talk about what is a sloop, although I think members of the commission can probably tune out for that part. Talk a little bit about how we're planning on updating it and talking about the process, and then talk a little bit about what's, what's next. Again, we're the team lead. We're a planning firm based in New York City. We're not working alone here. We've done a lot of work in St. Louis, my favorite city. I'm so thrilled to be back here. And we're working with Code Studio, who's helping us with land use and zoning. They're a zoning firm based in Texas. Public Design Bureau, Liz is here representing Public Design Bureau. They're helping us out with engagement. Lock Mueller, some of you know Lock Mueller, helping us out with mobility and environmental. BGH Advisors out of New York, helping us with housing and economic development, and Menke Consulting, helping us out with resiliency. So it's a big team, a lot of, a lot of people who are based here in St. Louis. I'll be spending a lot of time here, as I think this project requires really a lot of time on the ground. Okay, so what is a sloop? Again, commission members, you could probably tune out for this, really aimed at the public. But basically, it's a key part of the city's comprehensive plan. It basically establishes a vision for how we should best use the city's land. It's basically a guide for future development. Why is it important? Why should people care about it? Well, because it authorizes what kind of development can happen where. For example, y'all review redevelopment plan. Well, we saw it in action tonight. Review redevelopment plans, zoning text amendments, rezonings, all these things have to conform with the sloop. So it, think of it like this. It legally establishes the community's aspirations for future development. What isn't a sloop? It's not zoning, right? It's zoning's created as a means of implementing the sloop. It's not zoning. What does, why, why does it need to be updated? Well, a lot has changed in the last, well, since the last sloop was created in 2005. City's been amending it over, over the years, 20-some-odd times. But I think this is a holistic chance to really comprehensively consider how land use can best reflect St. Louis's current conditions, but also aspirations. But also, building a land use plan that better reflects priorities like economic justice, walkability, transit-oriented development, and climate resilience will help build a better St. Louis. Questions we're asking right now, are the current land use designations right? Here they are. You're all familiar with them. Part of our kind of due diligence, we're looking at other cities' land use plans, and we're looking at their own, their designations. So many, I couldn't even fit them on this slide, only goes to O. But, you know, in some ways, in some ways, it's, it's, the ones in the sloop are a little bit of an anomaly compared to some of the ones. So we're going to be looking into that. Are the designations specific enough? Actually, I can, I can answer that. No. Anecdotally, we've heard, although we're doing interviews now, but we've heard that not enough people use the sloop, in part because it's too flexible, right? It doesn't give much guidance. You could see the definition here of the special use, especially mixed use area. You know, in some ways, it could be anything, right? Is it a user-friendly document? Well, we're, we're going to find that out. We're doing a lot of interviews to understand how people use it and what people like about it. Does it have buy-in? Again, don't know yet. We're, we're going to look into that. And in fact, one of the things we, main things we want to do as a team is do a lot of community engagement to ensure that it does have buy-in. All right. How are we updating this loop? Here are our tasks. I'm not going to go through each one in detail. Here's our schedule. Generally, we're looking at an 18-month schedule. We're at the very, very beginning. So we're just starting. We haven't really, we started some of these tasks, but we haven't finished any. We're, so let's just look at a couple of these things. So we're reviewing existing plans and documents. Boy, do we get a big list of plans to read, and we've been reading them. And it's been super interesting to hear, hear about it, and we're trying to just understand what these recommend in their own right, but also more importantly, what kind of, what does it mean for land use? All these plans have recommendations, it turns out, that do, do, will influence the land use plan. We're looking at existing conditions. So just a snapshot of, you know, our kind of work in progress, making lots of maps, looking at economic trends and current land use and open space and racial inequality and so on and so forth. So we're presently doing a deep dive into that. We're also reviewing the existing plan. And so we're just trying to understand, I guess, again, how does it work? How doesn't it work? What should it, what could it do better? One thing we're finding is, is as we, as we do this literature review, and we look at all the plans that have been done, we're seeing that, you know, sometimes there's conflict between what, let's say, comes out of a neighborhood plan and maybe what is currently in the, in the sloop. So that's been enlightening. So that's something we're working on now. A big part of what we're doing is engagement. So we're gonna, we're gearing up now to massively engage. So what does that mean? Well, we're working on a brand identity for the project. This is all draft. But we are using the city's branding guide, using their colors and fonts and things. So we did launch a website. This, this website, it's up. All it is, is just basically what I'm saying right now, basic information. So it's sloop-stl.com. And we are launching a steering committee. So this, this is also about to go live. One of the big, one of the important things when you're doing a project like this is to have a good, good steering committee as well as working groups. So we're putting out a call. We believe in doing, we've done in the past, have had success with things like civic lotteries, where we basically have a lottery to invite citizens to serve on a, on a citizen committee. And that's what we're, we're, we're doing here. So I think Don, Miriam, and lots of y'all, hopefully, will have a chance to circulate this to your constituents and encourage people to join the steering committee. So look, look on the website, in the next week or so, there'll be a link to this, and there'll be an application process. And we're hoping to form the committee in not too much time. We're also trying to set up some working groups. We have a couple of different ideas for how to do this. One is by topic, so housing, zoning, mobility, et cetera. Another one is by goals, right? Like maybe, maybe it's good to get people, not to have all the people who do mobility in the same room, because apparently St. Louis, you know, people know each other. Maybe it's good to mix it up a little bit, so to get people, you know, from mobility and the housing sphere, talking about quality of life issues, right? We're also doing a lot of public engagement. This is a precedent from work that we did in Cambridge, Massachusetts. We like to make these big colorful models, get them out on the street, get people talking, engage people in conversations about land use. We like to use games and activities. We like to make engagement, engagement, engaging and fun. So we'll be doing that. This is a land use game we made for the city of Detroit. And we want to do a lot of walking tours as well. Focus, you know, focus groups and meetings are great. Nothing, nothing beats getting people out, out and about and seeing things and doing it kind of in situ, focus groups and meetings, focus groups as well, newsletters. So we like to put out a lot of content. A lot of people don't know what land use is or why they should care. So we want to put out a newsletter so people could read all about it, but also learn about the history of it. We can interview Don, and he could, you know, tell us all we need to know about the history of land use planning in St. Louis. It's certainly a very interesting history, as we all know. Of course, we're having a lot of meetings. In fact, this is our schedule for this first trip. This is our first trip here. And thanks to Miriam and Don, we've, we put together quite a roster. Can't wait to speak to all these organizations about these different topics. We're drafting visions and goals. What's cool is this is, this process is going to lead to something really robust and cool, which is clear statements on goals and values. That's a major part of this project, and also implementation. So this isn't just a plan that's going to sit on the shelf. We want to deliver a kind of blueprint of sorts for how to overhaul, for example, the zoning code to help actualize the plan. So we have Code Studio on our team. They're experts in zoning. One of the reasons we brought them on the team is because we care a lot about implementation, and they're going to be helping out with that. Okay, I'm almost at 10 minutes. That's, that's, that's it. I just, let me conclude. It's saying it's already, you know, we're just, just getting to know each other and just getting started. But it's really been a pleasure to work with Don and Miriam. I think we're getting along swimmingly, and I think we all share a lot of the same ideas for what this could do for the city. So we're all super excited about it. 10 minutes. Okay. Go, everyone can now go watch the Cardinals beat the Orioles. They're actually winning.
Well, you don't get to leave yet. The commission still gets a chance to ask a question. Alderman Cohn, are you online? And if you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
No questions. I look forward to the community engagement and the history lesson.
And one of the things that they will very soon see is the Zoom recording from a meeting that we held remotely at the Delmar Divine in the area, in a particular neighborhood, represented by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, where they had finished the process of doing a neighborhood plan. So what I want to just reinforce is we're interlaying and doing the neighborhood planning program that Jonathan's in charge of, that will get across all 79 neighborhoods with the overall comprehensive plan. And part of their orientation will be how to. the overall comprehensive plan, and part of their orientation will be how to get them to mesh.
Commissioner Boas?
No questions, very excited about the process.
Commissioner Garmedia?
No questions, thank you so much.
Commissioner Milberg?
One quick question either from Miriam or Don. Is this something that the city can leverage to make ourselves become eligible for grants at the federal level right now that we might not otherwise be eligible for? But for having a plan like this, it is, and seeing, nodding, okay. Wonderful, thank you.
For those that can't see, Don was nodding and said yes. Commissioner Williams?
No questions.
Okay. I do have one question, it's not going to be fair at all. Since you, 18 months is your timeline? Since you started, give me two of your challenges and two of the greatest opportunities you've recognized so far.
Opportunities, I mean, it's really great that there's this robust neighborhood planning process, and it's really great. I mean, we're, we're, we're charged with looking at the city scale, but already we're digging into these neighborhood scale plans, and so they're, I'm not saying they give us a head start, but they give us a sense of what's happening on the ground in some of these neighborhoods, which is tough to do when you, when you're tasked with kind of doing a comp plan for the whole city. So I would say building on the success and the momentum of the neighborhood plans is good. I would say that the challenge is the same challenge that you have with any comp plan, which is that you're dealing with a really big geography and you really want to get a lot of buy-in. But it's hard, it's sometimes hard to get into the nooks and crannies of the city when you're tasked with looking at, you know, such a big city and so much area. So I guess that's two related ways to answer the question. And, yeah.
And then the, the last question I have is, how do you address the fact that we have this invisible wall of, of city between the county and the city? Because obviously it does not happen in a vacuum.
Yeah.
There's no, no wall of, you know, Great Wall of China that's going to divide it.
No, that's right. And I think a lot of the, I mean, even as we start making, making our maps, we're not stopping at the city line. I mean, things like, you know, stormwater and housing issues, these things are regional in nature, so it's just something we have to, we have to think about. We don't, we can't, we can't say what the land use should be for the surrounding municipalities, but we can take into account the fact that we, we know that this, this is a region, right? And so we just need to be aware of what's going on outside of the city, just take it into account and identify ways that we could work together.
I agree to that. I mean, it's a really neat time in that context. Our neighbors in St. Louis County are actually beginning their own comprehensive planning process, so have an opportunity for coordination. We both know it's happening, so as the process is perceived, that'll be great. And also, East West Gateway is in the process of initiating a regional climate action plan. And so just really exciting timing in terms of how all of these things fit together.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Which reminds me.
More from you at that time. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Don, who has the final executive word so we can move forward.
We have hired a new sustainability director, been with us for about a month. That's in a relation to this. Two, Miriam has been doing a little research, given that it's 8:30 at night, and would you announce the research you found of a venue that's open to 1:30?
What?
I'm going to join.
So members of the Planning Commission, if you'd like to join us for, after meeting get-together, we're going to McGurk, McGurk's, they're open to 1:30.
I won't be there till 1:30.
For those of you, again, thank you for participating. This was one of our extended meet sessions, but the topics were critical. And again, thank you, Doc, for being here and being part of that. To the commission, to the staff, you all did a yeoman's work and have done it again. Thank you. And to commissioners, welcome to the new ones who have came to sit at the table.
Thank you.
You have added value to that. With that, I'll, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have a good night.
There we go.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not only have you chaired us on a monthly basis, it's been through the ups and downs of COVID.
Yeah, I would hate to have to fill your shoes, mister. You're just, you're not, you're not allowed to leave.